All right, welcome everyone again, well you didn't hear me the first time, for the planning board meeting for Ashland Thursday, August 10th, 2023. We are re gonna call the meeting to order at 7:58 after many technical difficulties, but we are, we seem to be online. So, we're gonna get right to our agenda and we're gonna repeat what we already, the few things that we already did, so that means Kate, back to you for the clerk report.
Since the last planning board I'm reporting, we received correspondence from four individuals. Some of those have been multiple emails on topic. I also want to report that I received a call as a planning board member, not as clerk, on, from somebody who had sent an email on a subject to the planning board.
All right, thank you. And just to confirm, to, before we go forward again, that members in our, online on Zoom can hear us. Is that right? Can someone, okay.
Yes, we can.
Okay, good, thank you. Before I keep going on this agenda with talking into space. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is public comment and I will let Peter Matcik manage the public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, so at this time, we have two people with their hands raised. The first being Mr. Mark DeSoni. Mr. Mark DeSoni, can you please unmute yourself and state your name and address?
Hey, thank you, good evening. And take a look at the closing, it's gonna be so much fun to get through. I have one question through the chairman to Anna Tamadyski. Can I ask you a question?
Public comment usually isn't directed to specific members of the board, but I will let Anna make that decision. I think, I think Mark was wanting to ask you a question. Is that right, Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you?
Yes.
Yes.
What's going on, Mark?
Okay. First of all, before I ask the question, I think, I think Kathy Jurick's answering this. I'm gonna ask you, in your words, what is your goal as a planning board member for this town?
What is my goal as a planning board member for this town?
Yes, what is, in your, in your mind's eye, are you, are you putting forth your best effort?
I would say, as you know, Mark, I recently got elected to this position fairly recently, or reelected, I suppose. So, I've thought about this quite a bit and thank you for your question. I would say the primary goal I have for the term is to continue to be effective as part of the comprehensive plan efforts that, as you know, we've undertaken as a town and to continue to provide input to this board, to make decisions that are helpful to the community and allow public voice, including yours, to be heard.
Okay, thank you, that was, that was good. And to the chairman, could I ask Dipa and Marcelo the same question?
Well, Mark, this is the question that you had asked one or two meetings ago and I offered the planning board that opportunity if they wanted to answer. It's atypical, it's certainly not required, so I will leave that open, but otherwise, we're gonna continue with public comment. Would either Dipa or Marcelo like to respond?
No.
Okay. They're both good, so we are going to go forward with other public comment.
Okay, thank you.
The second raised hand tonight is through Mr. Steve, Steve Morgan. Mr. Steve Morgan, can you please unmute yourself and state your name and address?
Sure, Steve Morgan, 136 Concord Street. Thank, thank you for the time. I had a couple of quick comments, I guess first, I wanted to advise the board, I became aware of an open position via your draft minutes, which I had to ask for in public records. So, it's coming up later in the agenda, but I have submitted a talent bank form for the open position. Hopefully, that will receive consideration. I don't know that there was any artificial deadline, but that was my first comment. And along with that, I have observed that the board is continuing to be in violation of open meeting law. Is again, behind on its minutes approval and I know that it's being worked, but, you know, I, you know, this is part of the reason I didn't know the open position was there. So, if the minutes had been posted, I could have read them and so forth, so, so thank you for that. I do have one comment about a further agenda item. If there's no public comment later, I wanna make a comment about scenic roads. Specifically about scenic roads, I live on a scenic road. I see scenic roads and scenic road bylaws is the responsibility of the planning board, not the sustainability committee and I object to folks not on scenic roads trying to turn that into a sustainability issue. So, when you get to that topic, if, if I can be heard or if not, I would suggest the planning board set up its own committee and keep it away from the sustainability committee, who is also severely behind on its minutes. This has gone on for now two years where they don't get their minutes out and they don't adequately engage with the public and keep people informed. So, I would just provide that comment. And then finally, my last comment is in regard to the construction going on behind my house. I had to post my property no trespass because people brought a backhoe onto my property and disturbed my property. As a result of that, I've also started relooking at the requirements for that project as approved and I'm finding that there are numerous things that were not done, including the, the proper landscaping and vegetation was not planted. There's only sparse few appetites over here, not what was on the plans. There are issues with the planning board not having had a hearing about the screening and, and such around the electronic sign, which really doesn't belong on the street, but you've allowed with restrictions, but there was also a stipulation of a hearing to review that plan, which never happened, but the sign is on the street. And so, I would just ask, and I know Peter and I had a conversation, I would ask that the town actively review its plans with that project and ensure that they are followed. And I have no objection to the fence being reinstalled with existing location, but I am not at all interested, as was discussed in the public comment, in having someone trespassing and moving the fence onto my property. So, I have posted it, it's been registered with the clerk and I, I have spoken with Phil Conway, the project manager. So, the town and the project is well aware and I hope to have a cooperative relationship in, in getting, obviously, the needed screening fence put in place as per the deed and moving forward. So, if anyone would like to come by and look at the conditions or discuss them, I'm certainly receptive to any party that wants to approach it constructively. So, that's, that's, that's my public comment. Thank you. And I'll take any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. As far as the planning board goes, the, the building commissioner is obviously in, in charge of enforcing the decision and the project that the planning board approved two years ago. Other issues would be out of the jurisdiction of the planning board, but, and I believe as far as going on site, Peter has been there multiple times recently and it seems that the situation there is being observed.
That is correct.
Well, thank you, I, thank you, and I know my neighbors are also concerned, they're not here, but, and I don't wanna speak for them, but I have had direct conversations that other similarly situated neighbors have been convenienced and nuisanceed by this. It was very disturbing to see this backhoe running on our property this week and, and, you know, this is unfortunate. I just wanna clarify, are you indicating the building official, not Mr. Matcik, should be responsible for enforcement?
Mr. Morgan, I can state that myself and town, other town departments have visited the, this Mendez school site. We are aware of all construction that is out there. Our zoning enforcement officer does do the enforcement of all plenty, of, of plenty board decisions. That he is the authority and so therefore, you know, he is an enforcement arm along with myself and the conservation commission. Regarding anything around a property dispute, I will state that that is a legal matter and the planning board is not the proper body to take up that discussion. That discussion needs to be taken up in the court of law and I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you very much, Mr. Morgan.
Well, thank, thank you for clarifying that. I will direct my future concerns to the enforcement officials and now that I understand the, the relationship. Thank you.
At this time, I see no other public comment.
All right, then we are moving on to the fourth item on our agenda. Just as, as I think some people have come on just fairly recently, we had technical difficulties for the first 45 minutes of the meeting, so everything is running a little bit behind, so bear with us a little bit. So, the next item on our agenda is a discussion with the design review committee related to the letter they submitted to the planning board dated August 2nd, 2023. That letter is in our binders on the back of the, on, right after the agenda. And I think it would be good, first of all, obviously, we have the letter, we have it in front of us. It would be good if maybe someone from the design review committee can explain why they decided to put this letter together, why it's separate from the project at hand and give us a little bit of background on that. Is there someone that can do that? Am I being heard still? Mark DeSoni, can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah, it's in my trunk.
I think Kathy's going to address this.
Okay. We just thought it'd be, I mean, I just thought it'd be a good way to introduce the letter so that we understood your intentions and what you were, what you were hoping to, hoping to relay by it.
Tricia, I can jump in and review this with the board?
Sure, that's fine.
So, we wanted to send this letter just in advance of our next report, which I think has been sent to you this morning.
Kevin, you are just, you are just very quiet, maybe you can move a little bit closer to your mic. Hopefully, you're not having technical difficulties as well.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, can you hear me?
Yes, that's better.
Okay. We wanted to send this letter in advance of sending our report number two that I think came to you this morning in regards to 949 Homer. We felt strongly about sending a letter separately from the report so that it would make it into the next conversation about this project between the applicant and the planning board. In particular, we wanted to address primarily the need for an environmental impact study to be conducted to address the, the surrounding properties and, and how this building could potentially have, have some impact on either seismic concerns, character, massing scale and the, the underground parking garage that would require excavation and could impact the adjacent of Butters. We, that's, that's basically the, the intent of why we wanted to, to send this along since this project has a, a very strong presence in the town, at the edge of the downtown and could require extensive demolition and, and excavation to achieve the intent that the applicant puts forward.
Does anyone else from the design review committee want to comment?
I would just add to what Kevin said, that two primary concerns from my point of view. One is the historic structure across the street and the fact that we want to ensure not only the continued viability of that property, but also safety issues regarding the gas station that is not far away. And then also, very important point for the entire town is that we protect ourselves from any potential cost that may be incurred if the recently done improvements to the electrical supply and sidewalks and things like that. I understand that the exact property is not part of the town work that's being going on, but there are adjacent areas and there are issues that we are wanting to be sure that the town doesn't end up with any disgruntled citizens or damages to properties that haven't been insured and, and that the town is protected from any potential financial liability. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, did you wanna add in?
They've basically covered it and we had some concerns from people who attended our meeting a couple of meetings ago and so we thought it was really prudent to take the time to write this letter, which is why we did it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that the board knows as well. Peter and I, as response both to, as part of the conversation that the board was having about putting the utilities underground and trying to understand that process, but also after receiving this letter, Peter and I and Alvaro met with Mike Carter, who is the current president and one of the founding members of GCG and who's also overseeing the downtown project is, or the third-party review for the downtown project. Is that right?
Correct, so I can just speak to that. So, the town, so GCG, who does our third-party reviews, they've been working in the town for about 25, 30 years. GCG was just hired by the town through this, through the town manager's office to help oversee the project from a third, third-party review. And so, GCG is here in town doing visits to all aspects of the downtown project. And so, because I knew they were gonna be here on Tuesday, Tricia and I did set up a quick meeting with Mike and we walked down to the site with this letter in hand, just to discuss any, any, any of the, the concerns that came up.
It was actually during the tornado warning and it was, we were hiding under the old trace station roof, you know, as well, so taking one for the team here. But the point was, when, when I read this letter, and please correct me if I'm wrong, yeah, the, the planning board, as we have had a little bit of lull in our schedule due to the housing moratorium, have been taking an opportunity to kinda educate ourselves on the role of other committees and things in town. And so, when I read this, I felt, and like I said, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's, it's definitely related to the project at hand, but it's also seems like educational questions that would be good for the board as well, things for us to review, like how, you know, it does raise important questions, like if you're digging, you know, you're digging underground parking in the middle of downtown or on the edge of downtown, you know, how does that work? So, so we kind of engaged Mike Carter. His actual site meeting got canceled because of the rain, so he had time for us, but we stood out there and just actually looked at the site and discussed these issues with him. Kind of, kind of one by one, I don't know if we covered everything. And, and, you know, in his experience to understand, you know, what, what, what type of danger does this put other properties in? What is the proper procedures to follow? What type of things would be appropriate to put in conditions? How do we make sure that the train station is, is going to be okay? So, I'm not really sure how to relay then. I guess, I guess my first question would be, is that also part of your intention to say, okay, this is about this project, but how could this, what if there's another project next year that's also in the downtown and the same questions are applicable? Would it be in kind of an educational component as well as saying, okay, this is how this stuff happens on this type of site? Is that, is that fair or is just my reading into things?
No, that's fair. I, I think that that was part of why it took us so long to write the letters. We had a serious discussion about it because we could see where this might have been useful for projects already that have happened in the town, projects that are already being built and then moving forward. And, you know, we might be lucky, there's a building moratorium right now, so we have the time to consider these thoughts and ideas.
So, I'm not sure, I don't wanna, I'm not sure how to continue. I can relay, Peter and I can relay and kind of in brief, the conversation we had with Mike Carter and then people can jump in or interrupt at any time, is that fair? Okay, okay. So, we started talking about, like I said, we didn't go through the, through the points in order, but it'll be easier for me to do so. One of the, maybe we started talking about blasting and he said that as, as we, we kind of knew from other projects around town that blasting is a highly regulated part of the construction process. It needs a permit from the fire department who controls, controls the process, putting seismic readings at different locations to really understand what, what is happening, how far the blast is going, how powerful the blast is. In this case, however, he said, he basically said they wouldn't blast, they wouldn't give a permit to blast in, in downtown Ashland and, and instead, it would be hole ramming, which is not, what's that?
That's just typical hammering.
Yeah, yeah, which is not, not altogether pleasant, but, but less, you know, less, like, I guess the, the second.
Less intensive.
Less intense than, than blasting.
Is that like a pile driver?
Yes, yeah. Oh, not a pile driver.
No, it would not be a pile driver. This would be typically just a backhoe digging and then obviously if it hit ledge, you're just gonna be using a hammer attachment on a, on excavator, just to kinda hammer that out.
Like a big jackhammer?
Yes, it would not be a pile driver, there'd be no, that, that's a little bit more intense, obviously. But, so it would just be quote-unquote, hole ramming is the, is the technical term, but it's just more or less a hammer attachment on excavator. The same attachment that you see at the, at the, at the new Starbucks site at 399 Union Street, that is hole rammer, it's breaking up the old foundation, the old concrete and that's just done, you know, across the board in, in construction.
So, I believe he said, even though it's not required maybe all the time for hole ramming, that, that the same kind of checks and check systems could be set up, that, that the town might opt to set up the same kind of check systems as in surveying properties in the area before that begin, before that work begins so that they can see if there's any damage due to the activity or setting up the, the seismic devices to, to understand what the impacts are in the ground. That those are things that aren't done all the time with hole ramming, but that could be put in place, given the location in downtown. As far as the ground settling, and then he made a, a point that just, this kind of underground parking is, you know, it's not unusual, even in downtown locations, of course, it happens. It's probably happening at multiplications around, multiple locations around Boston, you know, right now. So, so it's definitely not anything new and is fairly typical. He said in regard to the settlement of the ground, that typical virgin ground is considered settled, that it's, is 80 to 90% compacted and when they typically get through compacting a foundation or after digging, that it would be at 95% is, is what they should.
Correct, that'll be industry standard, so industry standard when you're a backfilling and vibrating and compacting earth, they typically look for about 95%. For road construction, for road construction base, it's 95%, so that is the compaction level. From a natural standpoint, ground is about 80% compacted, 80 to 85% natural compaction just with gravity alone. And so, there's that 10% margin that you're looking to exceed when it comes to foundation and or roadway construction.
Yeah, and in terms of other damage that happens as a result of these activities, he seemed to, you know, if the activities are done properly, other things aren't damaged, right? That it's a normal part of the construction process and not unusual in any way. So, so it was kind of a good, like I said, good education as far as that and I'm summarizing here because we actually talked for quite a while out there. And it, it might be good to have a more in-depth discussion about that at some time, right? Like I said, for educational purposes. He said, I think, as far as an environmental impact study, I believe that came up in one of the design review committee meetings. I think Alvaro said that and I think, we'll get to the, we actually will get to the applicant when we get on to the actual public hearing. But I believe at that meeting, the applicant said that they had some kind of environmental study done and was willing to, willing to share that. And that would include soil sampling and, and things like that. So, they knew a little, so they would know what the ground is like before, obviously, starting construction, if it's, how dense it is, how much, how much ledge is under there, if any.
Yeah, that was true and obviously, well, the applicant, we, we can ask the applicant about that, but I think overall, this letter was shared with our engineer, our third-party engineer. And so, I think it's good that, it's on, it's on their radar too as concerns. I think it is key to note that having a logistics plan is a very good, is something that we probably need to look at, just because the construction area is in, the proposed construction area is in, is in the downtown and the site is, the site is the site, right? And it butts public ways and so we wanna make sure that the, any construction and I think it may make sense for all properties and projects within Ashland that we start proposing a, 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 a construction plan or a processing plan, just to kinda get a general understanding. It's something that we typically require in the pre-construction meeting, but maybe it makes sense just to get it out front in first with the planning board, just so everybody's on the same page moving forward.
Because we did talk a little bit about how this project is very different than other ones that have recently come before the planning board, like 100 and Chestnut Street and 501 Pond, even Starbucks, because it really is very, on a compact site where a lot of stuff happens, has to happen. Obviously, Starbucks isn't going to be, you know, digging, you know, like that, so. So, it's the, a unique project in at least the past years, as far back as I'm on the committee, anyway. So, so it did seem like a, an appropriate time to do a more in-depth look at that for projects that happen in this type of environment, so. I can take a pause there if anyone wants to.
I do have just a follow-up. So, can we get like suggested draft conditions or considerations? Like I picked up some from your comments, but I wasn't there and you said it was more in-depth and I think that wasn't the stuff that was sent to GCG for review and now that it's on the radar screen, but maybe we specifically request, maybe we should send a memo, a specifically request based on your follow-up conversation and could we have suggested conditions?
Yeah, I would second that. I think that's really, really important because I, I do appreciate your sharing what you learned, but we, for me, the most helpful thing of this letter was, was a reminder that the bylaws for the Ashland Downtown District, my immediate thought was, do we have jurisdiction to address these things? And so, looking at the Ashland Downtown District bylaw 8.5 and the purpose of it, which includes strengthening the sense of community in Ashland, building a downtown inherent assets, historic architecture, cultural offerings, rekindling downtown cooperation, civic engagement. And then section 8514 requires us, I think it's 8514, requires us in our findings to, to find certain items have been addressed, like pedestrian. I don't remember all of them, but it's essentially like pedestrian safety and consistency with neighborhoods. I don't remember all the words, but essentially, it's right there. So, it seems like these four items squarely fit within our jurisdiction. So, it's helpful for me to look at the letter and be like, okay, I can do that, we can do that as a board. We have the ability to address these four items. But honestly, I don't look to the bylaw enough when we hear projects and I think we should consider doing it more so that we better understand what we are able to do and we don't forget key elements, because I do sometimes feel like unless someone brings it up, we don't really have a checklist of things to think about. Yes, this project is unique, but we have a train station with a historic train station building, a historic post office, other historic buildings right there. Any development, not just Homer, is gonna bring up the exact same issues. So, I second Kate's point, but I also think it's a really helpful exercise in checklist-ing areas of town. And I wonder if as a planning board, we might wanna sort of say, this is important to us. Design review seems to be very good at outlining those key elements. If they have capacity to maybe look at our bylaw and offer us input, hey, for this district and town, these are the things that we should be thinking about based on our. these are the things that we should be thinking about based on our bylaw. You have jurisdiction. And these, this area of town, these are the things you should think about. And I kinda wonder if Design Review would be interested in that, and if we as a planning board might benefit from their support. Because I don't think we always have time during our meetings to look to the bylaw.
Are, are you, um, just to backtrack a little bit, I think in terms of the possible, um, additions to, uh, conditions, you know, as, as far as construction, I, I think GCG seemed willing to help us out with that. They suggested that there might be conditions that we put in there as far as, um, you know, monitoring for like hole ramming. He talked about things like that.
Of course, I think that's something that's, that's why we have GCG. They're professionals, professional site, uh, civil engineers. And so obviously, that's something that I'm, I'm happy to coordinate with GCG, uh, not just for a learning experience, but also from, uh, from something that we could add into all decisions.
Yeah. And then the second part of that, Anna, I think you were, in, in terms of the bylaws that you're looking at, looking most, looking more at number one, the, um, which is the, the dealing with the historic nature of the town and everything that, that encompasses. And that I think is, uh, um, I mean, a more complex, one, one is about technical issues. I think, how do you do this? How do you build in a downtown area without damaging anything else? With getting traffic around, with making sure pedestrians are safe during construction and all that. Um, and the other one has to do, the number one has to do more with, um, design considerations. And, and that I think to me, you know, of course, I'm not the person on the construction site, but to me is, um, uh, an even more difficult question is because, um, because there's going to be completely polar views on, uh, on exactly those things. You know, issues of massing and scale and setbacks and, and all those things. And, um, and so I think what you were suggesting, Anna, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to look at the bylaws and maybe bring up, find points that we need to discuss more thoroughly about? And where these kind of, oops, sorry, where these different opinions may, may arise and what the options are.
Yeah, I think from going with it, to try to be more precise, like I had not considered, okay, we have, you know, we're digging and creating under, like if you think about it, underground construction versus above-ground parking space, all this thing, that is, it's relevant specifically to that area because of the historic buildings combined with the train station. So that is a unique thing that I didn't think about relative to downtown. Just, it was helpful to see it in this letter. And so what I was envisioning is Design Review is focusing on design in this way. If there's other areas of town, they have similar input on, like, hey, this area of town has these unique elements. Any project in Pond Street is going to ask the same questions. Here is the top ten questions we as Design Review think you guys should think about. This part of town, I don't know, maybe our more industrial part of town, um, like where we have the, um, the project we had last time with the, um, exactly, McGonco Road, might have its own unique things that maybe Design Review thinks we should be thinking about. Because this to me kind of struck as, hey, downtown, history, train station, these things you guys should think about relative to not just Homer, but any project in that area. So what I'm, I'm not visualizing them going through the bylaw, we can read the bylaw. I'm visualizing more of what, clearly they're thinking about the unique prospect of every single area. And it would be beneficial, I think, for us to get this in a broader way, so that we're not just focusing on one area, one project. But we're starting to see this community in a wider kind of whole, holistic way. That's what I was envisioning, because I'd be curious, what else have they thought about relative to other parts of town that we have some benefit from thinking about?
Anyone else wanna jump in?
I guess I, um, and reading the letter and listening to what everybody has said, I think, uh, there is, uh, I, 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 I see like three different parts to it. Relative to what we were just discussing on massing the historical nature of the place and what have you, I, I, I didn't quite get what the intent of this paragraph is. It seems like, like, like editorial, which is, which is fine, but this, this is what we've been doing. There, there's nothing that we, that we forgot here, and I think we are sharing with, with the, the Design Review Committee a sense of purpose of, of seeing the whole. And I think on the discussions that we've had specifically for the project that this letter is addressing, I think we've talked about those things. And, and I'm sure we will talk about that moving forward. So that, that is, this doesn't, I, I don't think this is actionable, it's good to know, but, but it's, it's pointed out as though, I, I wouldn't read it as though something that we've missed or something that we were not aware of. This is what we do on every, on every conversation. So, so that, I took that, that, that way. The other part is what Anna was just referring to, uh, the, the technical nature, and, and I'm glad that you and Peter had that discussion with, with, uh, with an engineer. But what, what is, what's, uh, there was some, uh, blurring the lines in, in some of this language and, and the way I read it. And of course, we, we, we need to understand what happens on the private side of that property and on the public side, which is where the project is taking place. Digging a hole to, to make a parking, uh, if it's permitted on, on the private land and, and is being proposed by licensed professionals, all these questions on technical natures would have to be responded to. The way they're going to excavate the, the place is gonna be directed by a geo-technical engineer that would describe the methods recommended. And GCC would, would comment and agree or not. So I, I think we should kind of parse the technical nature and leave the engineers to, 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 to confirm to us that everything has been fulfilled. And the last two parts, I mean, the, the protection of the, of the, of the train station, I completely agree, because I, I, and, and monitoring not only the train station, but I think all the, uh, uh, whatever is the proper radius of, of, of homeowners around there. Because when you're gonna do that, you wanna make sure that we protect their, their, their interests. So I, I, I think that, that as a condition, that makes total sense to me. And, and, and the last part, the, the, um, the, how do you call it, strategic plan, the, the logistics plan, uh, makes sense for us to review. I, I, I don't think there's any question that the police are gonna wanna know what's gonna happen, the town hall, there's, there's a lot going on there. So, so I, 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 I think it would be good to, 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 this, this kind of way into a kind of a net of, of, of items. And I think it's good if we, if we can kind of, um, look at which of those, which I think is really the last ones, that really, uh, I think we should, we should, uh, settle on, 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 on what applies to this project and what applies to any other project similar. So that, that, that's my comment. It would be good to keep those things separate. That's, that's all I, that's it.
Kate? Oh, no. Deepa, do you wanna weigh in? Okay. Um, Design Review, after hearing those comments, do you wanna come back and, do you have any comments to make, or?
This is partly why we sent the letters. We noticed that there was a problem. We thought it would be reasonable to send you all a letter. I think if, if, if you, uh, wanna continue the educational piece, it might be very helpful for, um, the guy from GCG to, um, write us back a letter or write you all back a letter in response to what we sent, so we can all sort of hear in quotes the conversation that you and Peter did, because it sounds really interesting. I'm sorry that I wasn't there, um, but I'm not sorry I missed the rain.
It was very last-minute meeting.
I'm sure. And then, um, I think that this might be something that maybe in the future they could also address in their reports. I actually look forward to seeing their pro, their reports on every project, because it gives us some insight about where there might be some oddball things in town that we haven't thought about. Like a few meetings ago, probably several months ago now, um, discussion was brought up at the planning board about the sizes of parking spaces in town, and that maybe that needed to be reviewed, because it was out of, might, we might be out of sync with other, what other towns are doing now, or thoughts about parking. And then, um, because I happened to have heard something right after that meeting about parking, I sent everybody a lot of documents about it, um, from a, uh, an interview I'd heard. So I think that these things are on our mind, and as we find them, we'll be happy to forward them to you all.
Yeah, I can certainly, you know, Peter and I can certainly look at, you know, ask GCG, you know, what would be maybe the best way to have kind of a little educational session? If it was, might be easier for them just to attend to a meeting and, and talk to us versus, I don't know, writing a report usually takes a lot longer, at least for me.
Well, they could do, they could do something so people could find it later on and refer back to it and say, oh yeah, that's what they say about things like this. Because it, it was actually very educational, it is very educational to read some of their reports.
It is, it is. I just try to be respectful of their time as well.
Tricia, one question, um, during that conversation, did, did he raise any alarm on, on any specific subject that he thought, oh, we're, we're gonna have to look at this, or it was more, uh, uh, okay, we see this project and we will review this, this and that?
You know, this, um, a- as far as like the things, maybe the general things on this list, no. He's like, some of these things we're doing right now in downtown next to train station, we're digging holes, we're, we're next to sidewalks, and you know, it's, it's fine. We do it all the time. I think though, when we were standing there looking at the site, but this, this maybe folds in a little bit more toward, into the discussion actually with the applicant, you know, that comes next. But, you know, as you were standing there looking at things, like, well, they're gonna have to, where does that wire go? Okay, we're gonna have to do something about that. And then we were talking about, you know, where the entrance to the site is and how there's a pole right there, and it's not just the pole, but the, um, the anchor line that has to be on that side. Uh, I can't remember how many, I think he said nine feet maybe from the pole. So there are things like that, that, um, do have to be, like he wasn't sure how it was going to be addressed and that would need to be addressed. So there's some things that are, that were very general about every project, and there were some things very specific about this project that would be, you know, in their, you know, in, in their normal report, because it's specific to the project, so.
And Mike will be here. Mike will be out in Ashland, obviously doing work for, on a downtown project. So obviously, as this project moves forward, you know, there'll be eyes on the ground, not just on the paper, uh, looking at the reports, but also on the ground on the site. So I think that's just something to know moving forward.
Any other comments from the Design Review Committee?
I would like just something quickly. Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
You can go ahead.
Okay, so I would just like to underline that what we're doing is meant to be totally constructive and that it's not in any way suggesting that something has been overlooked, but only that something, you know, we would be sure that something was addressed, uh, because, you know, we see ourselves working in concert with the planning board and the other agencies in town. So I just wanted to say that, and that I really appreciate the constructive nature of this conversation. And it's, um, it's really a pleasure to be involved.
Thank you, thank you for that. Um, Kevin?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I, you know, I wanted to comment on the fact that this letter was going to be longer and we actually pulled back on it a little bit. And we, we understood that we were kind of, um, outside of our jurisdiction as the Design Review Committee in the topics that we were addressing. But we saw an overarching issue, um, that we wanted to raise to make sure we were in alignment in terms of the things that were being requested from the applicant, and it sounds like we are. So I appreciate, um, the consideration of, of the letter.
Yeah, I mean, I, um, on the one hand, like I said, I think sometimes issues, well, I think it's normal for issues of design to have very different opinions and right answers, right, from different people. So, um, so that's almost a, that's a discussion for every project. I think the other component of that, um, is, like I said, with the, with our board, you know, that we have been kind of taking these opportunities for, to educate ourselves that a year ago, we, we didn't have time to do. And so I thought this one was actually kind of unique, especially maybe since we don't have, we don't have our Kevin anymore to kind of fill us in on some of these, some of these, uh, large construction site things. So that it was really appropriate, because it is a very different site than what we've been dealing with before. And the, the questions in some way are, are, are different, the concerns are different in that way. So I think it was a very appropriate timing to say, you know, maybe we need to educate ourselves a little bit on, on this process. Even though it's covered by building code, it's covered by regulations, it's not something we're gonna be in there correcting every, you know, we're not, we're not qualified to do that. But to have a general understanding about how things work, I think is very appropriate for us, for us to do, so. Any other, any other comments? Okay. Well, then we will be wrapping this up and we were going to move on to, I don't know, do we have a continuance first? No. So, um, the first public hearing on our agenda is for a ninety-four, nine to forty-nine Homer. And obviously, Design Review Committee, if you're hanging out, that would be, that would be great as we go on to talk about this project. Peter, can you kinda give us the update? It's been a little while since we saw it, so, um, can you give us an update about where we are?
Yeah, sure. So thank you so much. So tonight, obviously, we're joined by the application team of Terry Morris, uh, Ron Bork, and Mr. Rick Salvo. Uh, and so with that, uh, the application team has met with the Design Review Committee twice since the last time the planning board has met. I know they had received the GCG letter, uh, which was dated June fifth. In doing so, there was revised plans sent, uh, that were distributed to the planning board, um, and obviously posted online. That's the, the, the set that you see in front of us. I do wanna note that, uh, this afternoon, I did receive a, uh, updated plan, uh, which was not printed, just because I received them. And also I received a drain, drainage package and a response letter from the engineer. That response letter will be distributed as soon as possible and posted online. Please note, uh, all elements have been sent out to GCG for review. And so at that point regarding the updates on the site, I'm gonna hand it over to the application team to step forward and present that to the board. And so, uh, Terry Morris, please, um, uh, please, uh, give the planning board an update. And, uh, and, and Ron and Rick, if you wanna present, please let me know, and I will make you co-host to, to share your screen.
Uh, thank you, Peter, for the opportunity to participate this evening. Just as a footnote to the prior discussion about construction activities and the potential for, um, any change or damage or anything like that relative to this project, um, there are legitimate questions, we recognize that. But we also can assure you that of several things. Uh, I'll work from the blast first, and that is, there was a lot of question about conditions that should be, uh, included in any, uh, permit that the, uh, planning board, uh, votes to, to issue. We are, I mean, I personally and, and the, and the team that I work with are entirely familiar with, um, the insertion of a, a condition that deals with construction management plan. Construction management plans deal with, among other things, issues surrounding, uh, dust and road and control, hours of operation, uh, staging of materials, delivery, hours of operation, delivery. It also includes a, a contact person whose names are, uh, and, and numbers are given to the, uh, police and fire and, uh, and planning. So all of these things are anticipated as part of, uh, the, the, the actual construction of this project. Close to the home, I could say that the, uh, we are going below grade, uh, probably to an extent that it's not typical of, um, of building a single or two-family house. But nonetheless, um, we have every reason to believe that the soil conditions here, I haven't seen any test borings myself, but I know that this site is typically full of what's called urban, urban, uh, urban ash or urban fill, which is largely ash and, and other kinds of mixed rubble on top of, uh, ultimately, uh, gravel and mown. So we do not anticipate, uh, demo, uh, uh, any, uh, use of, uh, blasting, even though it, it's heavily regulated, as the chair has said, it's heavily regulated by the state. We do not anticipate, uh, even hole ramming. I am familiar with both of those, uh, operations. In some cases, blasting is less, um, you know, is less of a, 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 a curse on, on, on surrounding properties, because it's first, it, the activity is controlled. But be that as it may, we don't wanna plan to do either one of those. We are going to simply use, um, very large, um, machines that are typically associated with excavating, um, the foundations and structures of this type. There was some concern expressed at some point in the process about how we would handle the construction of, uh, this excavation that is in closer proximity to, uh, for example, to the back of sidewalk, the public sidewalk or private properties. That is typically handled by, and by a number of ways. Probably the most common is to simply drive part- Probably the most common is to simply drive piles and use sheathing as a way to retain the, the, the hole for, required for an over dig. So we're familiar with all these and, and I would hope that having, can share this information with the board and the members of the commission that are, that are on screen, that we are, we are fully committed to, to a project that is going to be a, a benefit to the, to the town and to any interested parties. Having said that, I think that, that segues into several issues that we believe have, were vetted, not, that were identified at the first meetings of the planning board and then subsequently vetted at the design review committee meetings that we have held. I'm careful to say that I am not speaking for the design review committee. The chair is here and certainly can express, um, any views that she may, or any information that she feels is more complimentary or, or more accurate. But I believe the, there was a lot of talk initially about the design and whether the design should seek to emulate or somehow integrate the historic, uh, uh, train station. In the most recent communication that we have seen, which is a, a letter that actually was, the team is just, just was in receipt of today, uh, which is, was sent by the design review committee. We note that they have come to the conclusion and made a recommendation that there not be any sort of, you know, any time, any way to try to copy the line or the materials because the, 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 the structure was, it should stand alone by itself. It was built in the late nineteen century by a prominent architect. It is a singular example of, of, of a style and of a building that serves a particular purpose and we are, we are not really seeking to copy or make any artificial connections in our project to what's across the street. Simply, I think we are trying to honor the objective of the overlay district, the Ashland downtown overlay district, by replacing what everyone can see, uh, the uses that are on the site, you know, a strip mall and, 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 and we are going, trying to basically establish a, a building, uh, and there's been some discussion about this as well. I believe one of the speakers at the last, um, uh, committee meeting mentioned the fact that they would like to see the building split up into smaller pieces to create more of a village effect. That was an issue that came up early, early on.
I'm gonna interrupt you a little, I'm gonna interrupt you a little bit here because, yeah, that was an issue that we've already previously discussed on the planning board.
Exactly.
So I'm kind of looking for, and we also have, obviously, the design review committee's notes, which I, everyone has received and, and likely read through. So I'm really looking for, you know, the interest of time, like, what are the big issues we're dealing with? Like, for instance, GCG still has a, I mean, their, their report is quite long. I believe some of those issues have been addressed, but it's, usually we receive a letter from the applicant to tell us exactly how those issues have been addressed or, or, you know, to let us know how they're being addressed. I know that there was some big issues with the designing of the, with the designing of the underground parking and, and how that, how that is going to work. I think, I believe that was redesigned. So if you could kind of tell us, like, the big, what are the big issues we're, we're looking at here?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you for focusing more on the discussion. I'll start with that one. It is true that the, I think it was, I can't know whether it was a GCG report or a peer review that identified a potential problem with circulation within the underground garage. Our architect, Mr. Ron Bork, who's on screen, worked with our engineer and that, that has been completely resolved. We have redesigned the parking layout so that we are able to accommodate, uh, the requirements for safe and smooth circulation of, of vehicles within the garage. I can, I can turn it over to either of my colleagues to give you a further explanation of that, if you want to put that issue to breast and then we can move on to several of the other larger issues. Ron, would you, would you care to speak to that? I know you did a lot of work on that and, and then Rick, I believe you recited the, you put that response in your, in your response on the, to the GCG.
Right, so I, I'll, I'll start, Rick. So, we did put a massage and do some redesign to improve the circulation at the end of the ramp, the turning radius. And a portion of that was how the vertical circulation went through the building. At that end of the building, it's very limited in where stairs can go, but we were able to relocate them to, in a position where it allowed a little more ability to turn at the base of the ramp. So I, I think we've resolved that issue significantly or sufficiently so.
Uh, I think there was just some other issues. I don't know if you were interested in how the sub, subsurface drainage system and, and was going to be handled on the site. I think since we last spoke before the planning board, I think, uh, Mr. Rick Salvo, our engineer, has since produced a drainage report and, and dealt with other issues that are related to the civil aspects of the site. Rick, we want to comment on some of those.
Sure, Peter, would I have the ability to share my screen? Oh, I do. Excuse me. So for the record, Rick Salvo with Engineering Alliance with the project civil engineer. I think everyone's pretty familiar with the site. As you can see, in the pre-development condition, you know, we've got number nine Homer Ave and extending over to number forty-nine in this direction here. We're about thirty-eight, thirty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-eight square feet of land. The majority of it is either occupied by building, by pavement, by hardpaned gravel, and then there's some landscaped areas around this house, small fringe around this house and kind of a hard, hardpaned area back here. There's about eleven hundred square feet of landscaping on the site in the, in the current condition, you know, which produces sort of a high rate of storm water runoff. If I jump down, we did excavate a test pit in this area here. We were able to excavate down about eight and a half, nine feet before we hit standing water in the hole. We did witness some modeling, which is sort of the bathtub ring, if you will, that, that the estimated seasonal high groundwater leaves on the soil, the standing on the soil that was about sixty-six inches, about five and a half, about five and a half feet down. What that did for us was it corroborated, um, the subsurface drainage system that we're proposing in this area here, that it met, um, the separation of groundwater, uh, which is about two feet, which is a DEP standard. We were also able to corroborate the parent soil material, which is a loamy sand, which was very favorable for infiltration. The entire paved surface of this parking lot will drain to a low point in this area over here, which is equipped with a deep sump, hooded catch basin, which then drains into a water quality unit, which has a total suspended solid removal rate of about ninety-three percent. So it's a very efficient system for about the ten thousand square feet of pavement that we're proposing in this case. And then the majority, and then this whole roof area also will connect into that. The system's been sized to completely hold the twenty-five-year storm. It mitigates the rate of runoff, significantly reduces the rate of runoff for the two-year storm, the ten-year storm, the twenty-five-year storm and the hundred-year storm. If I switch to, just show some color here, you can see there's quite a bit more green space in the post-development condition than the pre-development condition. We're jumping from about eleven hundred square feet up to about eighty-eight hundred square feet. I, I think outside of the drainage, one of the issues that had come up during the department review was the fire department access through the site. And if you can see this swath through here, that's sort of a different color. There's a, there's a paved, paver path through here for walking. On either side of that, there's a reinforced lawn that will allow ability of a fire engine to be able to pull into the site, drive through the site and drive across this and exit back out on, out onto Alden Street without the need to back up. The comments that we had received from the fire department had suggested using a, a single unit truck that had a length of forty feet. The GCG comments suggested a slightly larger vehicle. What you see here on the screen is that slightly larger vehicle that can turn off a Homer Street, pull into the site, traverse through the site, drive over that reinforced lawn and get back out of the site. This is brand new information that was sent to GCG and I imagine will also be sent to, to the fire department as well, through, through the normal circulation through the planning board process. So we haven't heard comments back yet, but that was the way that we had proposed and sort of worked with the fire department at the, at the department head meeting to be able to address the concern of apparatus traveling through the site. Beyond that, you know, the site, I think is, the, from, from this standpoint, you know, looking down on it, is very similar to the original proposal. Obviously, there's been a lot of tweaks to the plan to accommodate different, different comments and different interests, but the, the same basic principle of pulling into the site, having some temporary fifteen-minute spaces over here that would be available for pickup and drop-off, surface parking spaces over here, then exit down into the ramp for the, for the underground parking. I don't know, Ron, if you want to share your screen and, and show the board. I know you articulated how the parking was redesigned, but sometimes picture's worth a thousand words and maybe it's a little easier for the board to be able to see how those changes were made.
Uh, sure. So, if I could share the screen.
Uh, yes, you have, Ron, you have the power to share the screen, you're, as co-host.
Thank you.
As, as far as a little off topic, but I believe GCG also mentioned park, accommodating parking for the existing building. Is that included in your numbers?
No, that was not included in the numbers because the, we think that that observation was incorrect. The building next door has never had the use of any of the parking spaces that are located in a parking area in front of the strip mall. They have operated without any parking. They are legally non-conforming in that respect and will continue to operate in the same vein. So we stand by our original assessment of the parking requirements that we've, that we have provided for this project.
Okay, so, um, what you're saying is the lower level parking and the areas in question were, uh, location where these turning radiuses both leaving the ramp or exiting off of the ramp and, and going on to the ramp. So we were able to reconfigure the parking, maintain the parking count and accommodate the turning radiuses, uh, as requested.
As you see now, there's all twenty-four foot wide aisles, which is pretty standard. Nine by eighteen parking spaces, uh, which are about two feet shorter than, than the zoning requires, I know in Ashland, but a nine by eighteen parking spaces, you know, kind of an industry standard out there.
Tricia, quick question.
Yeah, please.
When, when you say nine by eighteen, are you talking about all the parking spaces, including the ones on, on the ground? There, there's no parking space smaller than that or there is?
No, the parking spaces, parking spaces inside the building in the garage, I believe, are all nine by eighteen. Is that correct, Ron?
That's correct.
When you get outside, um, all the parking spaces, all the standard spaces are nine by twenty in accordance with the Ashland standard. There's one space, um, that's nine by eighteen and that's in the, in an effort to save a pretty large elm tree that's out there. So we did shorten that one parking space up so we could save that tree. And then obviously the ADA spaces is an eight by twenty space with an eight by twenty aisle to create a van accessible space in accordance with, with the architectural access board and ADA.
I think it's important, just while we're talking about parking, that, that we will need to at least discuss this existing building. You know, as we look at adding a building of this size and to downtown, the fact that it, it does have another building on it that may not have had parking before, but that's still an issue and still a potential problem to be resolved when a, a building is being proposed on the same lot. So I don't want that to be just brushed under the rug as if, when it requires a waiver.
Well, Madam Chair, the, you'll see in this site plan, the site plan does not include that building. And they, all of the measurements that we've taken, all of the standards that we've taken with respect to floor computation of floor area ratio and setbacks, all of those things are using this configuration, this piece of land.
Right, so that building is not a part of this site?
That's correct. It is not.
There's two different pieces of property?
Well, there are three deeds. There are three deeds to, this, this property consists of at least three, three separate pieces. I'll, I'll have to, I haven't looked at the deeds in, in a while. I don't have, I'm not in my office, I'm actually out on vacation, but I will have that information for you and tell you how, how the properties are separately deeded.
I guess we just, we don't need to dwell on it now, but we would like, we should have a memo or something about that existing building, if it's a part.
That's fine. I'll be happy to prepare that for you.
Okay. Uh, I think the other thing for me, which I started to mention in talking about the discussion with Mike Carter from GCG, is that pole, the pole, the utility pole, that's kind of in the area of the exist, of the proposed driveway and the hold-down, which is on the side of downtown, obviously, to keep tension on that pole. And if those are located, relocated, and there's also a pole further along in the property that seems to have wires that go through the property to reach, I think, an apartment building in the back? And we're wondering what, if those have been looked at and what that entails? Because obviously they wouldn't be going through the building.
Rick Salvo can address the, the existing pole.
Yeah, can you give up the share for a minute, Ron? Thank you. So, we did locate all of the utility poles. Actually, the, the surveyor had, had located them all. For some reason, they didn't show up in the plan when it was originally submitted. This is the pole, this is the newest pole that was installed and I think is the one that you were referring to. There's a stone bound right here. This pole's about six feet outside of that stone bound. It's outside the limits of our driveway. All the poles are right on the curb line. The sidewalk is a minimum of five feet. Sometimes it's, sometimes it's a little bit bigger than five feet in the way that the roadway is configured with the property line. So, you know, the question of access behind the pole, there's always quite a bit more space than the minimum thirty-six inch clear space required by ADA. In most cases, it's, it's upwards of four feet, but there's plenty of room to keep this pole here. It can still be anchored back in this landscape area back here without any issue. The pole that you're, that you were referring to is right in this area back here. Obviously, we'll be working with the power company to see how they want to handle that pole. Perhaps, perhaps that power gets relocated underground and this pole slides back in this area and gets a riser put on it and it, and it stays servicing that apartment building. We'll have to work that out with the power company.
So you're saying that that's the, that's the pole that the, the pole on Homer Street attaches to? Is that right?
Yeah, if I, if I, if I shoot, let me, let me show you on the existing conditions plan, it's a little easier to see.
Yeah, just to jump in, I think- Yeah, just to jump in, I think the pole is from Homer, but it feeds a, a bu- a parcel that's fronted on Main.
That's right, it comes from Homer, this pole here services this building, thirty-five Homer, and there's also a line that goes back to this pole and then this pole from there services um one of these sites on Main here.
It just doesn't, doesn't seem like that riser pole was, you know, the, the one we, the one with the hold ba- the hold back?
The tieback.
The tieback, it seems um, it doesn't seem like it was that close to that brick building, but maybe it was.
That's, that's the brand new pole, that was the newest pole that was installed.
Yes.
That I was referring to.
Yeah. And when we were on site, we noticed, obviously, we noticed that, that the line that was obviously feeding the building off of Main.
Yeah, this one comes off of this pole here behind the dumpster.
Correct.
Yep.
Which is interesting because why didn't they come off of Main? But that's for, that's, that, that question's uh needs to be answered by other folks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there, I mean, I guess when Terry does his, his, his research into the title, I'm not sure that there was even an easement for it, so I guess, well, but that'll be, I, I think that's gonna be pretty easily figured out with the power company, we have room to accommodate it if we needed to, or perhaps they could just come off of Main Street.
Ron, were there any other issues that you wanted to comment, uh before I come in? Uh Madam Chair, members of, members of the board, uh we spent a lot of time with the uh, uh the Design Review Committee discussing the treatment of the site between the back of sidewalk, well, if you rec- leave that there, I guess, or something, the back of sidewalk and the front of the building. Um one of the things they asked Ron to do was to create a greater recess, you see how there are fi- uh four major projections on the face of the building, projecting out from the main part of the building to Homer Ave. They uh asked him to create a gra- or uh enlarge the recess uh areas so that there was the possibility of creating more active uh space or uh, uh, uh in front of the buildings. There was a lot of talk, we had originally proposed a, an extensive landscape plan for that air, for that area in front of the building. Um they thought that there was far too much uh landscaping and they would rather see some, some of it eliminated so that it provided for the opportunity to create some uh gathering space or some more functional space in front of the buildings and create essentially small plazas or terraces and which we have, which we have done. I don't know which one of these are, uh Rick or Ron, which one of these would show best uh that, Ron, would it be one of yours?
Yeah, Rick, Rick, if you want, I'm Cheryl.
So while they're bringing that up, so when I say that it, treating the area, both the site, the area of the site between the back sidewalk and the front of the buildings and also the look of the buildings, the treatment of the buildings, uh Ron has spent a lot of time in between meetings um re- responding to a series of questions uh for, requests for information that the, the committee had made and actually at the last meeting produced a number of options uh for the, for the treatment, uh different treatments, uh they had, they included shingle, clavered, some brick, um and those were all vetted. I think it's probably worthwhile for us to share that portion of the presentation with you, uh so as a way of uh answering some of the questions, uh addressing the issues that we talked about. So I think this is a good one, right, Ron?
Oh yeah, let me, let me get to the one that doesn't have the existing buildings on it.
Okay. The one that you had showed the di- the different texture, yeah. Ron, perhaps you could go into it.
Uh, yes, uh sure, so as Terry mentioned, um we did create, uh we did relocate the doors at the suggestion of the Design Review Committee uh so that they were all within a recess section of the building, so it created a um, a sort of sense of balance and you knew where the front door was, um and, and along with that, we did enlarge the plazas, uh we did uh landscape, you know, around it. Uh in this instance, I believe the discussion led more towards doing a planter box than to do that field landscaping. But i- in, in general concept, um all the, the recesses have the entry doors into the commercial space, uh which is outlined here, but it's yet defined depending on, on how the space is actually leased out, uh but there are multiple entrances and um, and then uh as Terry mentioned, terraces that would allow for, for example, cafe seating if there was a, a deli in this, in this space, for example.
We did, we did actually in one, in our presentation, Ron, with some uh perspectives and aerial views, uh show uh some projected seating, uh tables and chairs in one of those uh plaza areas. As Ron said, it's difficult, we, it's difficult at this point to basically define those spaces uh and say, well, we're gonna put benches here, we're gonna use chairs there and this, it really does depend on the tendencies that occupy the building and the uses to which uh those areas would be put. They're not, not all gonna serve the same purpose. We think that ultimately, since we're working towards um conditions for approval of the site plan, that we would have a condition that would make the a, a approval of the final uh landscape arrangement here um subject to the approval of, of the um, of the time, the planning department uh at the stage when, before a building permit is issued.
Yeah, I mean.
We could go, we could go, we could go round and round and round about which plants to plant where and this and that, and I don't think that it's the job that you, that you, the planning board wants to get into the weeds as to the planting and all of the other things.
Yep, I'm, I'm not gonna, I, I mean, um I'm not gonna speak for the whole planning board, but um on, on, on these issues that the Design Review Committee has been addressing, it, it seems like they've looked carefully at, at these kind of, the front, the entrances, this kind of thing. I think for me, um, w- the big pieces that still remain to be seen is just working through that GCG list, because I think when I read through the list, there are a lot of things that are a little tight, you know, and that have kind of um, that, that needed answers. And so I think for me, that's the, kind of the, the four focus on exact plantings in, in front of something or, you know, I, I need that list of GCG to be gone through thoroughly and with every item and response to every item and for GCG to agree that that was a good solution. And, and so that's a little bit back and forth yet, like, to me, that's, you know, um, that's the foundation, you know, that we, that we need to do, so.
Yeah, and I will say just today, uh, you know, Rick Salvo's on the call, but Rick sent over a detailed response letter.
Okay.
Which I think, it's not in the packet tonight, it was received today, uh this is gonna be put up online, it'll be sent out to everybody tomorrow, and that has already gone off to GCG.
Okay.
And so just to, to reiterate, that is where the response is from that June fifth letter.
I think it would be useful, Rick, do you have that letter you could bring up on the screen?
Yeah, we're not gonna go through it tonight, though, because the planning board hasn't even had a chance to look at it. Kate, did you have?
I, I think, I think what I'll say, Madam Chair, is, is we, we did provide a, a written response to every single comment, um we addressed every single comment. Um and I think, um, you know, GCG were probably just got it today or they're gonna get it tomorrow morning, um so by our next meeting, our hope would be that we would have, have worked out every issue with GCG, so then maybe we can have a more fruitful discussion with the board. But I just wanted to give the board kind of a heads up on some of the bigger things that we had addre- addressed or, or what our, what our plan was to address them, um and then once GCG gives it its blessing, um I think we'll be in a better position to further dis- the discussion with the board.
Okay.
So, so I had a follow-up on that.
Hold on.
Just wi- with the process, because if I recall, this is actually on a ticking timeline, um and it looks like they were doing a lot of work, but that GCG letter was June fifth, we're now into August, just receiving the response, so I want to make sure we're cognizant of like deadlines and timelines and don't put the planning board in a bad position over something that was uh maybe got lower on the list with the applicant to respond to, because that's, that's something that we, I very much rely on, like we, Peter says over and over, they've been working the town for a long time, we, we, I expect when it's all done, there's probably going to be open issues still that might be in the planning board's court or it might be another round, so I want to obviously get that everyone agrees, but I want to be cognizant of the timeline and make sure we have that discussion.
So from an administrative standpoint, I can answer that question, and, and Attorney Morris and I spoke about this today, and so the last extension, they gave us an extension, so for the site plan review, that expires on April, uh excuse me, August thirty-first. And so I did put that on the radar of Attorney Morris, and I did say we're mo- you know, we need to talk about this and, you know, extend that out to, I would say, September thirtieth, Sept- September thirty-first at the earliest uh to get the GCG report going. And so, um, I don't know, uh, you know, Attorney Morris, if you want to speak to that, but that is an administrative item that was, that wa- was discussed uh thi- this afternoon.
I do, Mr. Madam Chair, because as you know, uh every time we've discussed this, we've always agreed to every extension uh that was requested, we've never sought to put the planning board under the gun for, uh, under any timeline. Our sole concern, however, is that we not be, and got caught up in a circular, uh, you know, a carousel where we're between the planning board and the Design Review Committee and where the, a lot of these issues have been rehashed. We have, we believe we've answered a lot of the things relative to design review. GCG goes beyond simple design review, and I understand those are within the purview of the planning board. Our goal, Madam Chair, members, is to basically, we believe we've got sufficient feedback from the Design Review Committee as to, as to the issues that are important to them and that they think would be important to you and the public. And we have set forth uh, uh, resolutions or, or addressed those concerns. So we are hopeful that at some point, when we get, put all this together, not only the, the, the global GCG issues, but also the, the things that are site-specific, that we can move this uh forward um without, you know, and I guess in, in more economical use of meetings. We thought that this meeting would be useful to give you a status update of where we were uh and what we've, uh, what we've presented. I had proposed to talk about the facades, the facades are clearly um of interest to everyone, and, and I think that I would like, appreciate if John, if Ron could have the screen for maybe five or ten minutes at most to basically show you what work has been done on that, so we can get some feedback from, from you members, if that, if, if that's possible.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Uh so um one of the, the comments from the Design Review Committee was to, to show some options and materiality uh to the elevations. So what I've done is I've created four types that have a um variety of material changes and um, and sort of organization. This, this does not necessarily have to be replicated all across the building, we could create interest by maybe bookending with one type and then having the center with a different type, but uh this was really that exploration. So in the left, you can see there's some field colors and, and window frame colors and things like that, and it was a request that I update the model, each mo- the model with each one of these options, which is, is something that I'm working on. Um so this is our, you know, Pete, we call it type one. Uh type two introduces a shingle style along with the clavered. Type three has a um, a more of a um contemporary farmhouse vertical bat, board and batten along with clavered. Uh type four had a, a little more modern inset of metal panel along with the traditional clavered. Um in all instances, you know, there's, there's an organization, there's an organizing element where the main um gable ends will, will have several materials, they won't be overloaded with materials, and then there'll be a um, a different palette on the insets in some instances. So that way we could create that, that interest, but also change color, change material and um try to modulate it so that, you know, some of the comments were the size of the building, and we tried to establish a module which, which chased it down to a traditional pedestrian scale of a two and a half story home, um or a traditional storefront from, you know, the turn of the century. So that's, that's a result of.
Ron, I think it's important to note that this particular uh thing was always not, was not something that was favored by the committee nor is it favored by us.
Oh, right, so yeah, so the um, the ones that I've, I will be pursuing is, is type one, type two, and um the original concept on the building.
Comments from the planning board on the facades and materials?
I beg your pardon?
I'm looking for comments from the planning board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think without more detail is stuff to tell, but I, I, I like the idea that um, that the, they are exploring further these options, it looks like the Design Review Committee offer a really great, you know, insight. Uh I think we should, uh, I, I, I like the idea, I mean, personally, it's very personal um because it's aesthetic, um I, I like that some of the options are exploring a, a, a more uh, li- like a simplified level of detail. Uh in, in my view, I think as the, as these things get explored, it would be important to give precedent to, to, to the, the base, what, what the pedestrian scale feels and how those materials be a little heavier and, and a little more consistent, and maybe the interest goes everywhere else, but I, I think we should wait until these uh options are explored.
Yeah, um, Deepa, did you, what are we on on that?
I will add that as you're playing with materials, right now, the elevation or the view that we're looking at feels like it's a large mass, so it's really critical to apply materials to make sure we break that stretch.
I'm so, I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear.
Yeah, we can't hear.
No, your mic is on.
Um, I would just caution that when you're playing with materials, right now, the view that is there on this page feels like it's a large mass, so I think you really have to use your materials very strategically to make sure that it doesn't feel like a um unified east to west box versus kind of those nice intricate details that you have in these elevations, it really needs to come out, and I think that challenge is there definitely when you're playing with these different palettes.
I agree. And that, that's where I was looking at the possibility of bookending the building with a similar palette, and then in the, in the center phase, uh they could become uh, uh something else.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I, I think, I think the question at this time is less about exact color and material, but how is the entire building broken up, or is it left and right, or is it bookended, is, or is every, like, how, how do you, how do you start to distribute those things across, across the building to tell a different story about, about how this was built, you know, or um its different components? And um so I think, like I said, I think that might be more important than the exact color or materials.
True.
So, so I think at the next point, we really need to see color on the massing to understand how we're supposed to read this thing, are we supposed to read it as one big boat that kind of landed there? Or is, you know, how are those different parts expressed and, so that we can read it as different houses that might have come together over time, or, you know, what's the narrative there that you're gonna be using the color and materials to tell? I think the bagel table building is always a good example of that, because it looks like two buildings that kind of just happened to be built next to each other over time, when of course it wasn't, it was built all at the same time, right? But they looked carefully at that as a way to break down the mass.
I, I, I agree with you, Tricia, and I, and I think that maybe um having these part elevations to explore kind of uh variations of um, of relationships of the different materials are, are helpful, but, but um where you and Deep are going, uh I think it's also important that once that is explored a little bit more, we need to see the whole thing in context, because uh um sometimes i- i- there is a repetition of storefronts, which is a consistent use, and you want some consistency and, and some differentiation, so it's a little tricky, I, I'd like to make sure that when we see these explorations, we see a part plan uh blown up, which is great, and then um the whole project on a rendering.
Well, well, that's our intent.
Okay. Anna?
So my uh addition to this would be that I thought the Design Review Committee Report Number Two number two was very helpful. There is a lot of data there and a lot of input in red to the applicant. And so I do believe that we have to come up with a way to efficiently allow the applicant, we should address the applicant's concern of a back and forth. And I do think we as a board need to reach some consensus that we agree with the red and that we want these things to be explored by design review so that we're efficient. And, you know, I personally liked all the red suggestions. I had a few specific elements that I really, as a planning board members, personally care about. And so I'd like to highlight some of those that are important to me and maybe add a few elements to the applicant's thinking. Is that okay to do right now? Or do you want to go through the red first?
No, I don't think, I mean, given that we just actually got this a few days ago.
Okay, maybe not today.
No, but if there, there are things that you want to highlight, I think you should.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the things that I really liked, I mean, I liked, first of all, I agreed with all elements in the red, that the red was what were action items, as I understood them, as to what the design review committee wanted the applicant to look to. And I personally, although I may not have agreed with everything, I felt like it was correct to explore it so that we could later make a good decision. So I'm not committed necessarily to the recommendations implied in every situation, but I'm open to having design review further get the detail and explore. So my kind of suggestion would be that the applicant would respond to everything in the red. And then if the applicant disagreed with design review and felt that the planning board should have an alternative perspective, that we would be presented with, okay, design review wanted A, we, the applicant, think you should also think about B and C for this reason, so that we could get some feedback from the applicant, but also understand the designer review perspective. As far as highlights, I liked the mural concept. The design review had suggested putting a mural on one wall of the commercial building, 15 Homer. And I'd like to see what that might look like, I guess, in a way, to, like, what size, what, what are we talking about? The pocket park points were really, jumped out to me. I'd like to understand better the location of the pocket park, how it relates to the site, how it relates to the rest of Ashland, you know, accessibility to the public. The theme of the location versus the community, I really appreciate the detail that we're all thinking about relative to this building. But I keep thinking, this building belongs in downtown. How do we use this building? How do we get to it? Is it just a place to live that people drive from? Or is it part of a community where you live there, you go to the farmer's market, you bike to Stone Park, your kids go to school nearby and they want to go to the library? How does this building relate to all of that? What is the human kind of traffic through it? And what elements can we add that are, that we need? So some of the things that were not in design review that I'd like to think about is a bus stop, some sort of public bus stop or, or bus shelter, some type of e-bike or scooter charge station so that people who live there have a way to move around in ways other than cars, and that there can be a positive kind of energy, if you will, of people wanting to use downtown without cars as much as possible. The folks who live in this building, what will make their lives unique is their accessibility to downtown. They really don't need cars to do all these wonderful things. They can go to Starbucks. They can commute to the MBTA station. They can, their kids can go to school really without a car. So I really want to explore that. And that was not there. And then finally, oh, I didn't see it there. And then the solar, which design review mentioned, I'd like to hear more about the possibility of solar energy in this site.
We did address, we addressed a number of those in the design review process. With respect to solar, we agreed that we could put solar on all the self-facing roofs. Fortunately, those face, they do not face the street because we did not think it was going to be aesthetically consistent with the objectives of the overlay district to have solar panels on the front-facing roofs. So that was how we addressed that. We also addressed the issue of sustainability substantially. This is going to be, and I said it before, and I've said it at least again before the design review committee, this is going to be a fossil-free building. We are going to do everything electric. We're going to do it by heat pumps. We have, you can see the roof. We have used those small portions of the roof that were created flat. They can, they will contain the heat pumps. You can see them on the, on the, on what's shown on this shadow study drawing. We have repeatedly said that we were going to provide EV-ready, every parking space, both inside, in the garage and outside are going to be EV-ready. The, the committee, the design review committee asked about, well, how many of them are going to have chargers? Well, I can only say to you that in the other jurisdictions where I have practiced this kind of permitting, and that issue has arisen, the typical standard is 10% of the, 10% of the spaces are outfitted with charging stations. In that case, I can safely say, after having discussed this with the owner, that we can commit to 10% of the 60 spaces will have chargers. Any other charges, you know, in, within the garage itself, of course, would have to wait until we see what the demand is from the residential living there. In response to the question about bicycle parking, we have handled that one of two ways. Ron had his first floor plan that shows actually an area for bicycle storage and parking off of the lobby. Ron, can you blow that up? See bicycle storage space off of the, off the residential lobby. In addition to that, in the parking garage, there is a provision for mounting, wall mounting bike racks at the head of each and every parking space where that would be so desired. So parking, providing alternative ways of transportation aside from the automobile, that will not, that will not be a serious problem here at this site.
And, and just to clarify, I think that's great for the residents, absolutely. I think what I was commenting on is, as you know, there's been some talk of, and I don't want to open up a can of worms, but there was some talk previous meetings on bike path in the area, which is theoretical at this point. But I was imagining more of how this space relates to the entire community. So it's not just the residents, which is great. You're giving the residents those, those sustainable elements, but also the community that's nearby. Because this is, this building is going to bring people into the community and make them part of a greater community. And so I, I was not just envisioning, you know, obviously, if somebody is coming by from, I don't know, from the middle school to the Starbucks, and there, there's a kid who goes to the library who doesn't live in this building, they're not going to come into the building to charge their bike, right? They don't, they don't live there. And I'm, I'm envisioning this being a space that has, has to have some connection to the rest of the community, not just for the residents.
I, I think that's, I think you're absolutely right. And I think that speaks to how those spaces which are shown on the screen now that we've created those plazas, how they're utilized. Are they, are they going to, would they be, would there be bike racks there as opposed to seating or in addition to seating? You see, all of, those are the kinds of issues I'm using that's-
Absolutely. And I think that has the answer to the puzzle of how to connect this to the train station. I respect the idea that we can't replicate this beautiful, unique, historic design of the train station. But there's a theme here of transportation. There's a theme here of public space and use that 100 years ago was one, and now we have it a little differently. Now we have to envision the future of Ashland, right? And so there can be a theme here if you do think about that element of public transport and this building having some connection to that.
Yeah, I, I think from, I think we, you know, I think we kind of need to move on. I think the two things that are, you know, both things are kind of in process right now. I mean, we got the design review comments, I think, two days ago. And so-
Yesterday.
Yeah. And with the new drawings and stuff, I haven't had time to go through them thoroughly and understand each of them thoroughly, especially with the other letter from the design review committee. And then obviously, the GCG stuff is still in flux. So I think this is all, the further that we're going to get tonight. Now, I don't know if this is going, I assume this was done at design review committee.
Oh.
Given, well, given that it's in front of us.
Right.
So I don't know what the understanding is there. On the other hand, I'm a little surprised that some of the things haven't been more resolved such as-
Well, and so I, I am supporting Anna's position as well as supporting my colleagues on design review. I, I, I did not scrub everyone, but I did go to the red because, you know, and they seem reasonable to be answered, right? And I'm looking at it similar to GCG. If they answer and we, we kind of say that's reasonable and we're good with it, or no-
Who are they answering to? Are they answering to us? Or are they answering to design review for analysis? Because-
Well, that's a process for us to decide, but I think they should be answered by the applicant. Let's start there. And I, I, I think that's to their concern.
How, how do you see it? Because what Tricia said makes sense. So the, the design review committee highlighted, the, the only one area that, that seemed like they were, that they had an expectation of, of another review was the, the request of renderings depicting this and that.
It's kind of big.
That, that, that implies that they want to see it again. But if we are seeing it, I was seeing it initially more like you just described it. These answers, these questions can be answered and we can, we have the judgment to understand if they were answered properly. But the renderings part keeps the, the thing in flux. So I think a decision needs to be made of where is the status of the design review committee process? Or if it's going to basically be merged into a response, then maybe we can review and the members of the design review committee could join us at that review to make sure that everybody sees it in, in context and we don't have to wait for another cycle.
I mean, I would say possibly a joint meeting about that because the big things are actually open that we said they're better at, they have more time. But I, I understand the project's been in front of us a long time. The applicant wants to keep moving in it. And if we can come to that, I, I, you know, I'm okay with that. I think we do have to check with our colleagues on the design review if that's satisfactory as well. But, yeah.
No, I agree. I think, I think every item on the design review list, and assuming that the applicant has received this list too, in the same way that every item on the GCG list has to be answered in a way that we can read it and see that it's been answered and then it goes back, you know, in the same way the design review committee list has to be the same. Like, we need answers. A question was asked, it needs an answer. So, and, and the answer might be, no, we've decided to go in this other direction and would rather ask the planning board. That might be your answer, but it has to have an answer, right? So that, and I, I agree that it might be the most efficient way to do it might be to be have, to have the design review committee have, let's all talk about it at the same time. So that there, we, all of us are on one page. We're not going back and forth. We don't need to send it back and then back again in the interest of just efficiency.
I mean, I, I'm all for getting together with design review. I think that has great benefits. But there are 23 red items. It's a lot. And so once you double the size of this group, having a meeting where we discuss 23 items is going to be extremely time-consuming. And also they responded-
But there's different items. There are items that are more specific than others.
No, I understand. But it's, but we all still might have different views about that. You might have a specific view, but I may have different views. And so you may say half of them are not important, but the other half will be mine. So we're, we could be quite busy dealing with that. In addition, design review did a really nice job answering eight of our points that we brought to their attention specifically. And so we as a planning board need to, we need to come to consensus on those eight points that we already asked them to address. So I'm just a little concerned as to the efficiency of time. I understand the applicant's concern. Hey, why do I need to go to both groups? And is this going to be inefficient? But if we right now, this planning board likes the red, isn't it more efficient to give this to design review to address the 23 items? And then we can have a more succinct, organized joint meeting where we can narrow in on hopefully less than 23 red items.
But, but that, that is fair. But it also depends, how, how about all the design options that the design review wants to see? Are we not interested in us seeing those options as well?
I, I think this would, how would we miss that opportunity? You're saying that if we have them jointly at the beginning, we're more likely-
No, I, I'm saying that the design review committee requested options to be, to be rendered, which the architect is going to work on. And if, if, if we don't want to see it, but they're going to present it to the design review committee, we're going to miss the opportunity to see those.
I mean, I would, I would assume we would receive those as well as part of a response. Like, I guess I was envision-
But it's part of the red that you said that it would go back to them.
I was envisioning that if, if the red is saying change something, the applicant has every right to come up with, okay, design review, here's what you wanted. However, we, the applicant, think the planning board may like option B. I think as long as the applicant knows that we're not saying, hey, we agree with everything, and you're kind of tied to whatever the design review says, we're saying to the applicant, we respect the design review opinion. We want you to go back to them and give them what they're asking for. But we also want you to know that we may have a different view. And so we're open to alternatives in your response and give us your, your, the next kind of variation of it. I'm just suggesting, and I'm concerned with how much red there is.
I mean, maybe the design review committee can weigh in here because I'm not sure always that the reds are decisions. I mean-
Not decisions, but action items. I'm just concerned there's a lot of action items that we would then have to assess if we're satisfied. So if the design review says they're satisfied in a, in a response, I'm assuming that the text becomes black because black means updates the previous item. It's just going to narrow us in on the unresolved items. So I could go either way. I'm happy to make this one big party, but I just think that that could be quite inefficient.
Kathy, do you want to weigh in?
Yes, please. Thank you. So we, we definitely are not finished. And I know that we've asked for a lot of things. And I know that the reason you got the letter as late as you did is because it got very specifically cross-checked against everything that we said. And all of the red items are action items. And as I'm sitting here listening to this right now, I'm pretty sure we'd left a couple of things off. I think the very biggest thing that we are most concerned about is the scale representation on one of the first pages of this presentation where they show the photo montage and they show the building. I think you have to go farther through it. It's not the first page. You have to go farther down. That one there. And there's one with the telephone poles in front. So we are actually having trouble with the landscaping in part because we don't know what the final height of those poles and the wires are. We don't exactly know where they are. And we don't know where those poles exactly sit with the height of that building. So we don't actually know what kind, what size trees can fit out there for starters. And if we can fit trees out there, which is one of our problems. It was pointed out by a member of the public, and I think the board is unanimous on agreeing, our committee, excuse me, is unanimous on agreeing that the, that the actual rendering with the photo montage, which is not this one that we're looking at right now, shows the building farther down, sunken down in the ground and not as high, similar to the first floor of the three units where the two hair places and the other pizza place are. And so we're concerned about that because it didn't, it looks like either these poles are the top of the building or they're not quite right. And, and we're having an issue with what we're looking at. So we've asked that, for that to be fixed. And it may have been fixed because what I'm looking at right now looks like it's been fixed. Can you move that over to the right, please? That looks better, I think, than what we saw originally presented to us, which puts all of those poles at that height, at the top of the peak of the building. So we're, we're actually asking about that. And we want to know that that's correct, that that's actually represented the way it's going to be. Or are those poles going to shrink when the new poles go in? Because I don't know. I have no idea.
So Kathy, what are you recommending as far as the question, the point of like how we should do this? Because-
So I think there's two things. I think that it, and I, I, it's taken us four hours on two separate nights now to get through just stuff we're sending back to you. A meeting with the applicant took almost that long. So I can't agree more that this is all taking a long time. But it's also a process where it has to be thoughtful. I actually think that our two board and committee need to put our heads together and figure out how to make this a more streamlined process in that respect because we are going to have differences of opinion just among ourselves as to what we think these projects should look like. But I definitely think, I don't want to be in a position where I'm listening to an applicant say what they are saying tonight about the back and forth. I think we need to, we need to figure this out so that isn't, that doesn't happen again. So I know that for sure, all this stuff-
So I don't think we've had any back and forth yet, like that I've seen, because the only thing that, that has happened is we had a meeting, the planning board, we came up with eight items, you guys gave us responses and then you're giving us your, your second report. So I don't think we're yet at a point of great concern about a loop all over the place. I think we just need to get organized. We've got 24, 25 items in red, action items. If we, the planning board, have some consensus that we like these, we just need to figure out, do we want to do this? With the Design Review.
Can I offer a thought on, on that? Just, just quickly parsing.
Hold on, let Marcelo finish.
But just based on what, what Kathy just said and listening to Anna, I mean, I, I quickly go through the, the red items and there's kind of two categories. There's a category, there's a lot of them relative to things that would be resolved with the renderings, which we, we just heard looks like they have been resolved, maybe they have, but this is not all, I wouldn't categorize all red items as the same. There are some that could be just simple answers. Could, could we just parse them out and say, provide the answers that are specific to, in, in a letter or something that we can hear from Kathy and her group? And then the ones that are more design oriented could be treated differently.
Yeah, I agree. Cause I think there are some items in red, you know, um, all doors will be accessible without a step, provide a grading plan to confirm. I, I'm not sure that's needed from Design Review Committee. You know, I think it's.
Could I propose, could I propose something in the, in the spirit of time? Would the planning board trust Marcelo and Tricia to do that, to go through the list? And come up with what you believe we can handle on our own as a planning board versus items that would make sense to pass on to, to, uh, Design Review? I personally would be comfortable with that. I don't think we need to do it tonight. I think if we as a planning board agree on a general consensus that these red things are important to us, I think we can appoint you to kind of figure that out and, and split it apart for us efficiently. If there, if we can agree to that, I think that's far more efficient.
So it'd be picking out the things that we think should be focused on at the Design Review Committee meeting? Going back to the Design Review Committee versus the things that we will look at in Planning Board?
That's, that is what I'm suggesting.
I mean, we could certainly do that. I mean, my, my example was that, that there's a, there's a comment, one of the red comments that says that, it appears that one of the setbacks was not correct and the setback should be pushed to comply with zoning. That's a given. I think that the, 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 things like that are things that are, uh, we say, okay, noted. It has to comply. That, that's not a discussion. And things, the other things, I mean, I'd be happy. It, it will really, it will take 10 minutes and we could do it.
I'm just suggesting that that is an efficient way to do it. Just a thought. Unless we want to do it right now, which.
I don't think I have the bandwidth to do it right now.
We just got this report.
Yeah.
Cause if you can narrow us in, yeah. Are you okay with that, Kate?
We can't hear.
Uh, I think your mic is off, Deepa. Deepa was saying that a lot of these items are interconnected and I reiterated that.
So I believe what our, what our proposed plan is that Marcelo and I will look at this list, which we'd like to say, we just got a few days ago. Parse out the things that we think are still in the camp or that we should still, that should still be in the camp of the Design Review Committee. Things that do not need to be addressed in Design Review Committee, separate those two. And then have some of these issues, these, these remaining issues be resolved in Design Review Committee because they're not really meant to be designed, to be, they're not really meant to be resolved here in the planning board. So, um, so, but that list then will then be shorter and more focused. And we would hope then that in going through that list, that will be one more meeting. And, and then it would be back in front of Planning Board.
So I have just one question about that because it seemed like people in this group wanted to look at those four or five examples. Are you saying go back to the Design Review with that and ask them to put their recommendation and then just move on? And I think if we're not doing a joint meeting, I think we, we should give them the opportunity and not just pull that back out of the whole process.
I'm happy for them to provide a recommendation.
Yeah.
Should we, do we need the applicant's input on this or do we just kind of have jurisdiction to ask for another Design Review analysis, Peter?
I, I, I'm comfortable with what I heard tonight that the, the, there was this one option that was discarded in concert with Design Review and he's exploring A, B, and C or whatever. I'm fine making sure that that exploration gets further.
I'm fine with that too. I just want to make sure. Do we, do we need the applicant's permission to go back to Design Review or that's our, that is our?
It makes sense to talk to the applicant to make sure that, you know, obviously they do have some renderings they need to put together and it's a meeting. Uh, but I think obviously the, the applicant has stated, obviously this, the, the term carousel, which I think fits the summertime theme here. Uh, they don't want to go around and around on a carousel.
Yeah. And I think the Design Review Committee needs to be very efficient with its time and what they focus on. So Kathy, your hand is up?
Yes. So Madam Chair, I think we are as efficient as we can be. What I'm actually concerned about is we've been asking for things, some of them going on two, two rounds now and we're not.
Then you understand is like, as they have now come before the planning board and we are asking them to go back to Design Review Committee, they can see that we are very serious about providing these things. But it will be the list that Marcelo and I look at as the things that should be provided. So it will, it will be a shorter list than, than what you have in red.
I think that in the future, um, we're not going to have a second meeting or however many meetings we've had with an applicant if they can't get us all the stuff that we've asked for the first time around. I don't see any reasonable way to do this right now. I think we have to come up with it in the town and I think unfortunately they get to be one of the developers that has to deal with some of this, um, as we go through the process, but I think it's important. I think this is a big project in the town. And I think the committee is, is concerned.
I think the planning board has emphasized in, in past meetings that we rely on the Design Review Committee and we trust their input and that they should consider that very important. So.
I, I just want to be clear. I, I would be supportive of Design Review being part of our next meeting so that we can get, like, we're going to, the way I understand this is Marcelo and Tricia would come up with a shorter list of action items as to things that we believe, okay, we really do need Design Review expertise more. That list would, would shorten the action items for the Design Review. Applicant would go back to Design Review. We would get one more report, report number three. And then we would have a meeting, we, the planning board, and we would invite Design Review to come. I don't have a problem with that and I think that's okay to do because then we're at a much more narrow list.
I think that's where we're at, exactly what we're talking about.
So I don't think that would remove, uh, I don't think that would remove, Kathy, the Design Review's ability to tell us these things that remain a concern.
Okay. Can we, uh, can we have some input in from the applicant on that?
Um, Terry, I'll start. So, um, just for, just for full transparency, I haven't changed this rendering. This is, this is the rendering I presented and the comments that were made, I think were a little unfair because this is a photo montage of six or seven photographs and it was, so they all have different vanishing points. So when you put the photo montage together, you know, I selected this as my sort of reference point. This building is set back, uh, probably about 12, 15 feet. And it's about the same massing as what we have.
Yeah, I, I understand. I, I think those of us, we, we understand that these things cannot be done accurately. It's a perspective. It doesn't work like that. We get it, right? So, but what I'm saying, I don't want to, we don't, we don't have time. We don't have the capacity to go through this right now. And remember that, that list of what is going to be asked for is going to be edited by the planning board. So your list is shorter and we will make sure we take, if you have any, um, in, if you have any feedback on this list of what you were being asked to do that you think is impossible, very time consuming, we just don't have that information. Perhaps you can give us some feedback in the next day or two about that list and, and why it hasn't been provided. Maybe there's a reason you haven't provided it and it, that it just, it, the information doesn't exist or we know whatever it is, so that we can, we can take that into consideration. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I, I would, I would like the indulgence to respectfully, and I underscore that word respectfully, ask the Chair of the Design Committee, who has said that she has, we've made repeated requests for information that we have not provided. Give me one example of that so we know.
No, we're not, no, we're not going to argue about that here. I, we're not going to argue about that here. I have already said that, that we will, that the applicant can give us a list of, hey, we couldn't provide this because, or we did provide this and, and they say we haven't, whatever the thing is. Marcelo and I are going to edit that list. It's going to go back to Design Review Committee to talk about the things on the list. And then it'll come back to Planning Board to resolve all other matters. By that time, maybe we will have received all the information also related to GCG and we'll take a big step forward here. But we're not going to go back and forth and argue about this tonight. All right? So what do we need, Peter, to make this happen? Cause I'm about done.
Uh, could I just add one brief thing? I'm so, I just feel, I just want to reiterate that I, I very much appreciate and respect all of the hard work of Design Review. There's no way that the planning board can have that kind of detailed time to every single detail of design. And so I want to underline that. But I, I absolutely want to reiterate agreement with Tricia's point that there's no need for the applicant to convince a Design Review or any member of Design Review of one element. I think we, the planning board are the ones that need to be convinced, if you will, and there, we're not going to get there unless we move this forward. That, I just wanted to reiterate where I, I think we're getting confused as to what our jurisdiction is versus Design Review.
Yeah, it's a good comment. All right, Peter?
So with that said, oh, so with that said, and I, this is to Terry, the applicant, Terry Morris. The next meeting for the planning board is on August 28th. And also at this point, I think it makes sense to continue it. Um, I hopefully there'll be, um, my question is, is obviously end of summer. Do, do your, does your application team think it's appropriate to meet again on the 20, the 24th? Or would you like to continue this to the second meet, the first meeting in September, which will be September 14th? And then the second note is I think it makes sense verbally, but then we can follow up by email. Is to continue the, um, the date of final decision to September 30th.
Uh, Peter, I, I, I can't really answer that question on, at this time without conferring with my, uh, my, my two consultants, you know, the Ron and Rick. Most of the burden of what we're talking about falls on them. And I'm not going to put them on the spot saying right now whether they can commit to one or the other. But I, I will certainly have an answer for you tomorrow.
Okay. Why don't we do this for the point? And let's just take this with a grain of salt. Let's, for the planning board's perspective, continue this to August 24th with the understanding that the applicant will be in contact with the two consultants and confirm that date. And then obviously if it needs it to request a continuance, this, this matter will be, appear again, uh, at the first meeting in September. Uh, and then, but I, I think it makes sense for that to just have a, a verbal agreement that the, the, the date of final decision will be extended to September 30th.
How many planning, how many of the planning board meetings are there in September?
Well, right now there is one more in August, which would be August 24th and there'll be two in September.
All right. So agreed.
I make a motion for nine to 49 Homer that we continue the public hearing until August 24th based on having a verbal agreement followed by the written agreement that the continuance of the process till September 30th.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote?
Deepa and Kedai.
Anna Tismaniski, aye.
Marcelo and I, aye.
Catherine Jurzick, aye. And Tricia Kendall, aye. Okay. I have a
Time to break?
Plan. Nope.
Okay.
If you need to take a break, go come out. We're, we're, you know, yeah. Um, okay. So we have a couple next to our agenda. We have a couple, um, well, one is a withdrawal, 12 to 16 Union Street. That's the definitive subdivision plan next to the Public Safety Building. I think everyone got that letter. They have, are asking to withdraw the application without prejudice. Simple summary, Peter?
Simple summary is the applicant back in November put in a preliminary subdivision and their whole goal was to freeze zoning. Upon the denial of the, the Town of Ashland's housing moratorium, uh, and without an appeal of the town, the applicant has decided to withdraw the application because at this point there is no need for a zoning freeze on that property, um, uh, in defense of a building moratorium. And so with that said, uh, the applicant did not want to, um, go through the hoops of a definitive subdivision, uh, with the review process of GCG and, and the planning board. And so therefore, uh, the applicant has made this request.
So Peter, a quick question. So, uh, GCG was already reviewing another round of, of this project. What, what happens with that?
No, so, so the, so GCG, we had a, we had a peer review fund. There was one round. Uh, they never submitted additional material. And so therefore it just stops. And so GCG did a review. They were actually, they were paid invoice all set. They will not receive that money back, the applicant, as a consultant peer review account. Um, but the application, it just kind of ceases. It withdrew all without prejudice and, um, everything, and, and they lose their standing, their November standing, um, with this withdrawal. And so it all comes down to what they were trying to, were trying to, they were trying to secure a zoning freeze. They lose all standing. And, um, and, and, and that preliminary subdivision gets wiped out, canceled out.
Kate, were you about to say something?
I make a motion that we, um, allow the withdrawal without prejudice for 12 to 16 Union Street definitive sub, subdivision plan.
I second.
Roll call vote?
Deepa and Kedai.
Anna Tismaniski, aye.
Marcelo and I, aye.
Catherine Jurzick, aye. Tricia Kendall, aye. All right. So next on the agenda is 10 to 60 Main Street. Peter, is there someone here from 10 to 60 Main Street who we've sat here the entire time?
At this point, we're looking at the, 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 we, the, the participants? No. I did go back and forth with the owner, um, Rich Gordon. I went back with the attorney, Joe Antonellis. And I also know that, um, the architect, um, excuse me, uh, Scott Richardson, uh, confirmed attendance. However, due to our difficult, technical difficulties, I'm not too sure what happened. Uh, I've been looking in the waiting room and I haven't seen him pop up. Uh, but with that said, um, obviously the application is still trying to put things together, um, from a, from a architectural standpoint, from a site cert standpoint. And so, um, what I can bring forth to the planning board is the requested continuance, which was via that, I believe, a, um, email letter, a letter received via email, which was dated, I believe, July 28th, if I stand corrected.
Yeah. So just, um, one note on that. I had asked Peter when they asked for a continuance that we should have someone here to explain to us why we're having these long, long continuances and then not really seeing much work. And so that's still a question that I have. I guess I'm willing to continue it one more time, but we're going to expect something at the end of this, you know, either that there's been a change of project, that it's being withdrawn, that it, there's a significant step forward. Cause this isn't, this is no longer going to be the pattern to be wasting the planning board's time with these continually long continuances. It doesn't make sense. If, if the plan isn't, if the project isn't put together, they should withdraw it and get their act together. Is my, is my bottom line, I guess. It's getting a little crazy.
I am happy to put that in email and, and I will CC whoever.
Is there any, is there any other feedback on the board? That's just my personal.
I mean, I felt like we made massive progress and then the continuances are taking away that energy. So my concern is that we were in a very negative place for a little while there. It felt very tenuous. In fact, I think we were pretty close to saying this is not going to work. And then we made massive progress and it disappeared and that gives me great pause and concern for the future of the project.
Agreed. Anyone over there? Okay. All right then.
Yeah.
We'll be continuing. Do you want to add anything to that, Peter?
No, I think I understand the frustration and I'm happy to, um, be a conduit to, to get the point across.
And we saw this project in?
May.
Early May.
Yeah. Early, yeah, yeah.
May, yeah.
It's been.
A long time and without a report, with nothing.
Yes.
So. All right. Um, is there a motion for the continuance?
Kate, you're our motion person.
Motion, Kate.
I'll make a motion to continue the, um, 10 to 60 Main Street Special Permit Site Plan Review Project to September 14th, 2023 meeting. to September 14th, 2023 meeting.
Second that.
Anna roll call vote?
Debo and Gaddai.
Anna Tysmaniski, aye.
Marcelo and I, aye.
Catherine Jurzick, aye.
And Trisha Kendall, aye.
Okay, we have made it through that. Now Sustainability Committee, I apologize for the late hour. All of us would like to be out of here soon, but, but this is an important issue.
Actually, I'm going to ask, are we actually going to be cogent enough to have the conversation, Trisha? Given the late hour, because I'm just going to check in with Maggie and, with Margie and Chuck to see if, like, it's a little late. I want to be respectful.
Are you checking in with the planning board or with?
Both, I guess.
I think that's fair. That's a fair point, because I have to say, this is really important to many of us. And I don't want to give it less emphasis or attention because it's 10 o'clock at night.
I don't want to give it less emphasis, but I know you may have a clock on this and the fault was on our end, not your end, so.
Yeah, but at the same time, I want to make sure we'll have a cogent conversation. So Margie, I'll lean on you to see if you're actually able to lead the discussion because you've got a heavy lifting to do here.
That would be hard. And also, I'm not really sure what, what it is that we're going to be, or we were planning to do.
Okay. I, I would recommend, Trish, just given the, the timing right now, I think we've, we hung on just, just out of respect. We didn't want to just leave you hanging.
I apologize for that.
No, it's, it's absolutely fine. I get you had technical listing and I can see what you were doing really important.
Can I make a? Yep, sorry.
Yeah.
So you were, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of what you, you said, Ash.
I thought someone was going to say, can I just, so I.
Okay.
Okay, I interrupted you.
All right, so what were, what were you going to?
It's okay, why don't you, you have, and it's okay. Go ahead, make your point.
What I was going to suggest is I know that the tree bylaw has had some history and is a very complex issue. And I, for one, would like to do more research other than what I've done. And it seems like there's so many different ways to approach a tree bylaw. And so the suggestion I was going to make is that we maybe consider having a retreat with the Sustainability Committee to really focus on the tree bylaw so that it's more of a working session and a little bit more substantive. Rather than being part of a formal meeting that we can actually sit down together and look at some examples of tree bylaws and really kind of get into the nitty gritty of the complexities of what this is, because I think it's a very complex issue. Just a suggestion.
I'd be comfortable with that if you guys can make the time because I do think that it does require some level of collaboration and back and forth where, you know, 20 minute slots are probably going to, can always leave us with open action items continuously. Having some sustained time on it might, might actually push it through, given the number of times it's been attempted. But I'm also not the only one making a call on something like that.
You know, in the interest of the calendar, you know, frankly, I don't see during the summer getting people, it's hard enough to make sure everyone is here every other Thursday to attend a planning board meeting with summer and vacations and other responsibilities. So my recommendation, if totally understandably, you don't want to get in this tonight, we put you first on the agenda for our next meeting on August?
24th.
August 21st, August 24th, right after the clerk, well, right after public comment. We put you first on the agenda. Everyone's bright eyed, bushy tailed, and give this matter the attention it deserves.
Yeah, I unfortunately won't be available on August 24th. I'm actually out myself, but Margie might be able to lead that conversation. But, yeah, so, so we could, we could approach it. Either way, I'm actually open, like I said, I want to make sure this gets collaborated on because at the end of the day, this is something that you guys have to be comfortable with and need to actually put out there because it is a bylaw change. And, and, you know, it's my understanding that this is not, like, we are supporting, even though we are, we are spearheading the, the need for it, I think we are supporting you in putting together the right bylaw that, that you can be behind, right? Because we can't really do it.
Well, what is your suggestion for timing then? I just can't guarantee that we can get a retreat date together. That sounds difficult to me.
Okay.
So I know next, is it next Thursday is comprehensive plan, right?
Yeah, so Peter, I think you had had a conversation with Margie around timing. Just given the calendar challenges and what something like this really ought to go through, which includes public review and all of that.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
No, it's, it's there.
For the next town meeting.
One minute, actually, you know what, Ash? You just, the, the screen here in Town Hall went black, so can you just repeat? Well, I understand your question. And you just go.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out, because we are trying to gauge timing. So I was like, we've been pushing hard for fall town meeting. If, if, is this actually going to be feasible? But, but if we, and, and Margie and I discussed it and we were like, if it's not fall, it can be spring. Like, we, we care about the fact that it happens and it happens the right way. But we also want to make sure that if we move from fall to spring, it doesn't mean that it just gets put on the back burner because clearly, it needs the effort and the work and, and that, you know, by, by shifting it, if that gives us the chance to do, you know, the retreat or if that's the right mechanism and that's the appropriate way to do it, I don't want to block that. But, but I also want to make sure that we don't all just sit back and kind of go, okay, great, it's in fall. So now we'll basically just let it slow burn. And then we'll be getting close to fall, to, to spring, and then it won't happen again. You see where I'm coming from?
I think it's very early to make that decision. I think we need to have a meeting of some kind first to really understand what our individual questions are.
Okay.
I was going to suggest not a full scale presentation and meeting, but maybe one or two questions from each person on the planning board. If we already have specific questions that we're thinking about as a way to, as a, as a way to give immediate feedback or gut reaction questions for the next presentation. That would be my suggestion tonight, so that we move it forward even a little bit. Because I'm sure we each have kind of immediate questions, just a thought.
Is it possible that you could send us those questions so we can prepare?
To mail them or send them to you? I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, that way we can be prepared and we can come prepared with those. Have you all received the, I think Margie had sent out sort of the, the brief around the work that had been done so far, like, like in a slightly more summarized version?
Absolutely. We've received it.
And was that useful? Was that what you were looking for?
I don't know if we've all had a chance to review it, but I certainly found it useful. And I would propose the planning board members get our questions over to Peter. And Peter can combine them maybe and get them over to the sustainability folks.
I'd be happy to collect all the questions from the planning board and get it over to Margie. And just to answer your question, Ash, regarding the timing of the bylaw.
Yeah.
From my professional opinion, it's going to be very hard to put together a bylaw that is ready to go for fall town meeting. Right now, we are in August and I know, just going by the dates, we have to prepare for a town meeting that's going to be held mid-November. I would have to have everything, I would suggest that the planning board have everything wrapped up by last meeting in October and to give us at least three meetings to discuss that bylaw. Prior to that meeting, which would have to take place mid-September, which would be at our September 21st meeting, I would also have to advertise the bylaw in the newspaper. And that's a three week look ahead, right? And so really, you're looking at late August to have a bylaw ready to go, to present to the town and advertise to the town. Once it gets advertised, you know, you really can't change the bylaw in any huge, you know, any large manner. So I will tell you right now, and I know I emailed Margie a timeline, but I would say late August, early September at the latest, we would be looking to get a finalized bylaw. And at this point, I do see that as a very tall hurdle.
Yeah, so, so here's what I'm going to propose then. Again, my interest is to do the right thing by the town to actually succeed at this. We've taken, I think, multiple swings at it, but to succeed at it and succeed at it right. And, and, and that incorporates all of the feedback, right? And this is not a hidden process, like, in any way. So let's, let's agree that we'll meet at the next meeting. We'll put the questions together just so that we can continue to make progress. Trish, I'm going to take the timeline pressure off us of, of trying to do this in fall, as long as we all align on the fact that we'll do everything possible to get this into the spring, right? And that just gives us the space to do this right. And that's the intent and, and it's not the intent to punt it, right? Which I don't think anyone is, is going to punt it. I'm just trying to be rational about it.
I don't, I think it's premature for us today, without a substantive discussion, to say whether it's fall or spring.
I think Peter's, I think Peter's information is saying it's just not, it's just too hard to get all the mandatory meetings in and that. And is that not what you, you heard?
I understand that that is Peter's recommendation. And I respectfully believe that we need to have a substantive discussion before we, as a planning board, can either agree with Peter's recommendations or not. Because a lot of it depends on how much pre-work we've, we've done, how much thoughts we have, what our questions are. It could very well be, based on our substantive discussions, that we cannot pull it off. Or we could have a vigorous conversation in the next meeting and decide that it's extremely important for us and that we want to add extra priority to it. So I would, I would like to not today decide that we're no longer hearing it for the fall.
Yeah, that is fine. It's not really even our call. Like, we're waiting for a, a bylaw to come before us. And that would be my opinion, like, right now, this isn't complete, right? This isn't ready.
I'm not disagreeing. I just don't want today to say.
Right, right. So, understanding how long it takes us to get to that level of completeness, it seems very optimistic to fit that schedule. So, but that's fine, we can hold off on it till next time.
Yeah, yeah. Let's, 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 let's agree to the meeting on the 24th. I won't be there, but I'm not critical path on this, right? And Margie's the important person from my committee and Chuck's going to be there. So, so let's agree to the meeting to the 24th. You've all gotten the summary that we had promised in our last meeting. If you could review it, send the questions to Peter. That way Margie knows what to prepare for, how to structure the conversation, right? Let's have the conversation on the 24th and then make a final call on, you know, now or later or whatever, right?
Okay.
But let's also commit to the fact that then if we're pushing it later, that we do everything so that we don't end up in a position where we've again run out of time. That, that's all I would.
And Marcelo has a question on this?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's going to become self-evident when we meet. Can I suggest one thing and maybe ask, Ash, you can tell us. I'm really looking forward to the discussion. Could we start next meeting, maybe with a very quick executive summary on your part or, or your, your team, maybe Margie will do it, on, on the history of why the bylaw failed last time and understand what, what, in your view, led to, to that result? So that we, they intend to create something that we all feel is important and that that will pass.
I don't, I don't think the bylaw has come up before.
Yeah, so I just want to clarify.
It's never been complete, so it's never, hold on, Ash, hold on, Ash. It's never been, the process has never been completed, so it's never gone to town meeting.
Okay.
Even to add to that, it has never come to the planning board.
Yeah.
And, and I think.
So what, what Ash was referring to as, we've went multiple times, is that the internal process?
It was the internal process. Internally, I can state that our old assistant planner, Emma, our old sustainability manager, Frank Nakashian, Margie, met multiple times with DPW staff. And there was never a consensus regarding the, the bylaw. How it, how it would apply, the enforcement, the size of the tree, how it's measured. Is there a payment in lieu? What's the cost? Looking, you know, starting to, as we started to analyze other town bylaws, how it was really going to be implemented, how it was going to be adopted, implemented and, and, and discussed. Did the bylaw, how, how was the bylaw going to fit in mo, in really mo, how was the bylaw going to be molded for Ashland?
Okay, so the, the plan to, to address that should be in place, so that we don't repeat it, right?
This is where I think Peter might prepare a memo for us outlining some of those issues so that we can be better prepared as a planning board to actually provide and find consensus.
I, I don't think that though, all those, I mean, I was here for all of them, I think, from the beginning. And I don't think that they're that detailed. Margie might be able to provide other drafts, but this, it, it's been much more piecemeal than that, than.
What I'm suggesting is Peter has some expertise as a planner in some of the challenges, if you will, of a tree bylaw that we, as a planning board, might want to consider if we're going to attempt to reach consensus as a planning board. I'm just throwing it out there.
I'm happy to outline what I believe.
Not so much, not so much like the past.
No, no, I don't want to dwell on the past because.
But more like, hey, planning board, these are some of the elements that other communities have thought about.
I'm happy to outline a one page memo about.
Something like that, so that we can more efficiently, as a planning board, get to the heart of where the problems might be.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay. I'm not really worried about the past and I would urge all of us to forget the past.
Yeah. And then all of a sudden, this thing called COVID hit.
Yeah, but I was not referring, just dwelling on the past. I was referring about learning on the past to ensure that we don't repeat it.
Yeah, and I, and I would say, I, I'm happy to put a little one page memo and, and we can kind of work through it. But, but there was multiple meetings, Margie was involved, the assistant planner was involved. We came up with a pretty good draft. We were looking at stuff from other towns. We sent out some socioeconomic data that we collected recently that was updated. What towns have tree bylaws?
I can tell that Trisha remembers that fondly.
It's just been, it's been a really long time. This has been on the table a really long time.
And then, you know.
And that was really what I was reflecting on is that we, when I said we've taken multiple attempts, we've taken multiple attempts at trying to draft this thing. One of our learnings, Marcelo, just so you know, because we went through a similar sort of introspective process, was that we didn't engage the planning board early enough. And that is why I came to you the last time around saying, I'd like to start this process with you, rather than trying to come up with something that's already abstracted out. And, and, you know, we get stuck in the mud just before it even gets to you, right? So that's my attempt at making a learning from the past. So, so we'll see how it goes, but, but, you know, honestly, it's never been out there. We, we just haven't gotten it past the finish line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just one thing I did, you know, right now, this is a six inch diameter tree. Right now, in our bylaw, this is a major tree, right? This is an eight inch tree, right? This is an industry standard major tree when it comes to a street tree, right? And so just to, we just have to discuss and, and focus in on what's a major tree? What's a minor tree, right? Because right now, we're not even, we can't even, we're not, we haven't even reached that consensus.
Well, we've never tried. This planning board has never actually had that conversation.
And I know the sustainability, the sustainability hasn't tried with the planning board, right? So it's kind of like, okay, what qualifies, what doesn't qualify? You know, when you come through a planning board application, should there be a tree plan? You know, what elements, what, what are the triggers, right? And I think those are the bigger items that have to be flushed out, you know, within a discussion. I think having that discussion in person is great.
And remembering that we're not, we are not actually changing the bylaw, town meeting does.
Correct.
We are presenting a proposal to town meeting. And so whatever it is we are drafting is meant to give the public a chance to opine and potentially consider options. So it's not that the planning board has to come to the perfect consensus of which one of those is the right answer. We have to find what are we willing to present to the public for consideration at town meeting, which is slightly different from reaching that perfect decision.
Agreed.
Okay, so we're moving this to first thing on August 24th.
And I'm going to say 7:15 to 8:15.
Yes, please.
And we'll have an hour to discuss if we need more. Yeah, and thank you so much for coming tonight, live in person.
Thank you. This is important. Thank you.
For being the one and only audience member?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All right, I have turned officially into a pumpkin at this stage, even though I don't look like it. So I'm, I'm going to call it. Thank you again for, 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 for listening.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, bye.
Thank you.
All right, so, yeah, hate being thrown off by those technical issues. Okay, I don't think, jump in if you think I'm wrong. I don't think we need to do anything under seven.
Nope.
September 14th, we're, we're going to have a joint meeting with the select board. They're just showing up to our meeting, very easy. We'll make sure we have appropriate time in our agenda.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to put that first.
Okay.
And we'll get our questions to you about the tree bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
We'll get them to you.
Yeah, yeah.
And then eight?
I have a 8A comprehensive plan. I just have a very brief, I had a very brief introductory meeting with the, with Jen Goldson today. Reached out to her as a planning board member. We had originally had Anna and I and she got tied up at a work thing. So two things, I think I got this correct, that I don't think I knew before from her presentation and obvious detail, is that she has phases. It roughly lines up with everything we knew. And I believe she intends, as part of her process, to come to the planning board at the end of those phases, like an actual, so it's way down the road when that is or whatever. The second thing relative to the board, she did, like, I said that we were the two reps of planning board. She was thrilled to hear that there was like that on the steering committee. And my only other thing was saying that the board is very engaged about. And my only other thing was saying that the board is very engaged about it. And if there's things that she thinks are helpful, she will ask. But you had brought the last meeting about us coming potentially to meetings, and she said that may, what she's seen possibly is we may just have to advertise it if we think planning board members are coming to them.
So like if we go to a public meeting, kind of thing?
If, if, so you and I will probably be there, we will try to be at steering committee meetings, and then if other planning board members come.
I think it's about, I think it's about if you can participate, you know, or how you participate. I mean, I'm just going from open meeting law from the governor's office, but, but Lisa Mead can weigh in on that process as well.
Well, that's why I brought it up. She, she didn't make a hard fest, she just raised that. And not to deter, it was the opposite. It was like, the easiest way is just to advertise.
What's that?
I think these have provided guidance.
Yeah, I mean, it's written out by the attorney general's office, so, you know, if you're just listening in, you know, versus participating.
But you might, if you went to a meeting as a resident, probably might want to participate.
Which you, which you can participate, you just can't, you have to do it publicly, not by sending texts back and forth with your, you know, whatever, you just have to do it publicly.
I'm incompetent doing that anyway, so don't worry about that.
So anyway, but yeah, we can look into it just to make sure everything is above board. I actually related to the comprehensive plan, I actually watched both the June and July meetings, so it was good to kind of see what was going on. I was especially, it was especially interesting to see the July meeting with the two co-hosts that were, there are two co-hosts.
Chairs.
Co-chairs, sorry, co-chairs, that were not on the select board or the planning board and how that seemed to, I don't know if it was that, if that reason or whatever, but there was a much more engaged, many more other voices, that it really, the voices just seemed much more distributed. Because even at the first meeting, you know, just a few people talked, and at the second meeting, I guess it was the third meeting, I didn't watch the first one, just a lot, a lot more people were engaged. So I was really happy to see that, because that seems like what both of you have been talking about.
I think it's the reiteration of what we wanted, that leadership should be non.
And about the residents kind of driving it, not select board, planning board, you know, kind of thing. So that was good to see.
I think, I mean, we're literally, like, there's people in there that I still don't actually really know. So I think we're honestly at a big group still getting to that point as well.
Sure, there's a lot of people.
So I think, I think some of that comes just with more time, you start feeling more comfortable, right? That kind of thing.
And from what I recall, the steering committee wanted to give new folks a chance to try to co-chair, so hopefully others will try as well. And I'm sure we'll have even more diversity the more residents get involved. I mean, it's a two-year process and it will be good to see where, where the leadership ends, how it all works out.
Yeah, I was, I was very impressed to listen to the group. And I don't, I know, I know some of them, but I don't know most of them, I would say. So, I'm very impressed, so, anyway, just wanted to note that. Anything else in reports that needs to be done today? We talked about design review, sustainability, CPC met, but there's nothing really related directly to planning boards, we can talk about that another time. If there isn't anything else under eight, then under administrative, administrative matters, I wanted to get back to this associate member update, which it seems like ages now that we talked about this and Kevin was here and we reviewed the description for the associate member. So after that, we had, so I'd written up that position. It had gone on the town website, on the volunteer page, it's still on the planning board page. And it was also published in Michael's newsletter twice in July. And, but obviously, but at the same time, right after we, right after we made this description, both Peter and Anna said that, hey, you know, there's a lot of qualified people that applied for the, for the comprehensive plan that expressed an interest in being involved in the town, right? And so we thought it would be a good idea to reach out to, to those people who made it to the interview stage of comprehensive plan selection, but weren't selected as the comprehensive plan representative, right? So, so that was decided. We decided to do that and I think I formed a letter to send to those people. And here's where it got kind of confusing, because Anna then decided to skip out of the country.
Sorry, guys.
Yeah, so, so I was waiting for, I actually didn't know she was going out of the country.
Sorry.
So I didn't, it's okay. You have permission to travel without me.
I feel bad.
But, no, no, no. So the process just got a little delayed because I was waiting for Anna's response, right? In the meantime, one person from, one of those people that was on the comprehensive plan list, Peter happened to see them and informed, this is the application we got. Peter informed them of the positions, that person applied. But meanwhile, the whole other process was a little, no one was applying, no one was applying through Michael's website or anything like that. So when Anna returned, the letters went out to those comprehensive plan interviewees. But we really have to just put the date later to allow, and keep, keep putting it on Michael's.
It was still before the deadline that we had all agreed on.
Yes, but very short.
But it extended it.
Yeah, so, so I guess we should think of just what we want that deadline to be. I think we talked about maybe August twenty first, but that's not very far away anymore.
What deadline did we give them?
I put August twenty first on the.
And we've gotten nothing in response.
I got a recent.
When did these letters go up?
Monday.
Monday.
Yeah, so they had two weeks, but.
I would say to the end of the month.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's fine. I think that's what you had suggested too.
That's fine, I think that makes sense.
So we'll change it to, we'll, I don't want to say open it back up, because it never really closed.
Maybe do a follow-up email that says, hey, we, the planning board on today's date, assuming we have consensus, agreed to extend it to the thirty first or whatever.
Yeah, so.
If you're interested, please fill out the talent, talent bank form and we'll.
Do we need to update that date on the regular thing that we posted on your website?
Yes, yes, we'll update it everywhere and then we'll put it back in Michael's newsletter with a new date, so it's just back out there again. I mean, like I said, it hasn't been, no one's been beaten down our door, so we might as well. And, and Peter has been in touch with the one person who did apply. She gets it, it's fine, right?
Yeah.
With the process.
No problem.
So, yeah, so it's all.
It was just a courtesy update and.
Yeah. So that's where that simple matter got confusing. With that, I don't think, do we need to do any of these updates tonight?
No, I have really nothing.
Nothing new.
If you have any questions, you can, happy to call me or reach out.
Okay. So then what meeting minutes do, do we have both of those?
May twenty fifth, and then also we have June eighth.
Where are those? What section are we in?
They were right behind the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
So you go all the way back to the agenda.
Binder's a mess.
Yep.
All right, so. Okay, so May twenty fifth.
I did not have any changes.
I looked before, I did not find them.
I'll make a motion that we accept the May twenty fifty, two thousand twenty-three minutes as proposed.
I'll second that.
And roll call vote?
Deboengidai.
Anna Tysmaniski, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jurzak, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. All right, so the next ones were.
June eighth, it's in the packet. I, I sent in a proposed, I think it's.
Edit, I think it is in the packet, highlighted.
Yes.
Alvaro took care of that.
So the.
Highlighted portion would be the proposed new language verbiage from Kate.
And Kate, I assume you went back to the tape for that, because I can't even remember what image, or maybe you had it in your notes? I don't remember what image she showed us.
No, I tried to, without doing a transcript, I did go back to the tape, because I, I think you all know, the reason I put that in was that if someone went down there, it looked like gravel, and I just wanted it to be clear from, from the minutes.
Yeah, no, I think that was a really, that was a really good call. I was just like, how did she remember where the image was from?
Kate, is that update from you or Tricia? Then it says Tricia, I mean.
Well, I was the one, Kate offered the edit, but I was the one that presented that information at the time. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the June eighth, twenty twenty-three minutes as edited.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Anna, roll call vote?
Deboengidai.
Anna Tysmaniski, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jurzak, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Okay. Is that the end?
That is the end.
Does anyone have anything else we need to?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Deboengidai.
Anna Tysmaniski, aye.
Marcelo Hona, aye.
Catherine Jurzak, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye.
Peter, quick question, when is the two for meeting?